Welcome, everybody, to the October 17th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones and pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commissioner now utilizes speaker request forms, so if you would like to speak on any item, please complete out a speaker request form located on the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return to Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the dais. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask Commissioner Drews to do the moment of silence and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. At this time, we come to review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us to the Board of Commissioners consent agenda. And I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 3rd, 2023. Number six is to cancel the following outstanding checks and remit $15,183.45 to the Office of the State Treasurer as required by SDCL 43-41B-20. Number seven is to acknowledge the notice intent to conduct a raffle by the Black Hills Studio of the Arts. Number eight is to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Ms. Jacqueline Cross to the Rapid City Area Air Quality Board. Number nine is approval of the letter of support for Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment for the Section 18 disposition implication. Number 10 is to approve the elimination of the DBMA 11 positions and update the DBM position listing on file. Number 11 is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Rapid City and Pennington County regarding the use of Central Square/Tracket database subscription. Number 12 is approval of the fourth quarter LEMPG, which is a local emergency management planning grant with the state of South Dakota. And finally, number 13 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of September 2023.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. At this time, is there any commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none.
Mr. Drews. The consent agenda is presented.
I have a motion by Ross Connect, seconded by Drews, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to our regular agenda items and items from auditor. And first one is 14A, and I'll recognize Cindy Mower.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Mower, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that we have before you is the state and local fiscal recovery funds, known as the HERPA funds. We finally made it through all of the discussion with our consultant, with the Department of Legislative Audit, with Jay, and Casey worked many hours to pull together all of the numbers for what we could utilize those funds for, the remaining 6.7. And so now I would ask that we make a motion to do an operating transfer, to move those funds from the general funds to the Capital Projects Fund, to be used for what we know to be all of our projects that are upcoming.
Is there any questions from the Commission for Cindy?
So Cindy.
Ms. Hagcock.
This is a one-time funding source, is that what we're talking about? Is that why we are moving it to?
Yes.
Okay. Why I'm saying that is for employee retention at this point and some of the changes that we are making in Brian's office and other, I think that maybe the 6 million, some of it could be utilized a little bit better in those areas, or at least some of it, instead of taking it all for Capital Projects Fund. That's just my opinion. So I don't know how we're going to keep funding people and raising people where we are today and not have that in the general fund this year, let alone next year. So just my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Hagcock. Is any further discussion from the Commission? Any public comment? Go to the board for a motion.
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to authorize an operating transfer in the amount of $6,720,390 from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
For this money, is that to go towards the projects that we're currently working on, that we've had briefed to us from buildings and grounds and things of that nature? Is that kind of what this transfer is for, is to do our remodels and things of that nature?
Yes. Chairman.
Are you done, Travis?
Yeah, that was my question, just to clarify.
Okay, Ms. Hagcock.
So I understand the 900 concourse for some of the money because you need to finish what we started, but the Interstate Bank, I'm not in favor of putting any money towards that at this point. In fact, I'm not in favor of doing the bank, so that's why I'll be saying no on this transfer.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Commissioner Hagcock. Item B, Cindy.
Back in September of '21, the Commissioners basically assigned $300,000 to go towards Crisis Stabilization Project. We put that in an assigned fund balance within the general fund. There was never a need to transfer that money to the Capital Projects Fund for the Crisis Stabilization Unit. The county did use, there was already some county dollars within that fund, and we did use most of that. But now we can release those funds, and that fund balance can go back to the unassigned fund balance. I'd like a motion for that.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock for approval, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we come to items from the Sheriff, and what I'll do with this is I'll let the Sheriff speak, and then I'll read the resolution, and then open it up for discussion.
Thank you. Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. As you know, homelessness is a heavy topic, and we're all elected officials, and a lot of people are very passionate about this topic on every end of it. And as elected officials, we get to hear that nearly every day from people who think that we provide too many services to the homeless, people who think that we're not doing enough for them. What I'm here in front of you with today is a resolution and a call to action with a new start to move forward in our community with a shared vision and a shared goal. And I'd like to thank Mayor Solomon, who's here today. He and I met last week. We did a press conference on this resolution on Friday, received a lot of feedback over the weekend, mostly positive, some negative. We took this to the City Council last night. This resolution passed unanimously without discussion, but there's a lot of passionate people at that council meeting specifically addressing the closure of the Hope Center. So what I'm here today in front of you with is not, this is not the time and place to talk about what services we are providing, what services we should provide or should not provide. This is a call to action to join us in the vision and the goal of reducing homelessness in Pennington County and Rapid City. It's something that I do believe that everybody on every side of the topic could agree on, is that we want to make sure that how we're treating the homeless is the right way to treat people, that we provide the right services at the right time, and that we're not creating an environment that brings people to our community from other communities who are voluntarily homeless, who could be working or doing other things. So this is just the first step in the process, and appreciate your time and consideration today. And I think that Commissioner La Croix is going to read this resolution, and then I'll stand by for any questions or discussions.
Sounds good, Brian. The Resolution Number 2023-085, Joint Resolution to Reduce Homelessness in Rapid City and Pennington County, whereas the City of Rapid City and Pennington County recognizes both the difficulties faced by individuals who are homeless in our community and challenged on the community of how to address the needs of homeless population. And whereas both the City of Rapid City and Pennington County have observed significant increase in homelessness in the community over the past several years and have put substantial strain on the existing governmental and private service providers. And whereas the City of Rapid City, Pennington County, recognize the multitude of involuntary challenges and voluntary actions can lead to individuals becoming or remaining homeless. Whereas the City of Rapid City and Pennington County spend considerable taxpayer dollars to work with homeless individuals and to address the effects of homelessness in our community, and whereas it is the intention and goal of the City of Rapid City and Pennington County to reduce the homelessness in our community and to support private efforts that are aimed at reducing homelessness. Now therefore, we resolve that the City of Rapid City and Pennington County are committed to the goals of reducing homelessness in our community. We have further resolved that the City of Rapid City and Pennington County intend to initiate a dialogue with community stakeholders in order to generate community direction and efforts towards the goal of reducing homelessness. And that is the resolution. I'll open it up for questions for Brian.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
If Mayor Solomon could come up and Barry Tice, maybe they have a few things they want to add to this since they're part of this team. Appreciate you guys. Thank you for coming, Mayor Solomon.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I thought Sheriff Mueller's words were right on target, that we're not coming here with the answers. If the answers are easy, it would already be done, but we're coming here recognizing that there's a challenge and that this is a shared challenge, but that we could also have a shared goal. And I know that this will be the kind of the first step in that process, so I don't want to weigh it down too much with programs and ideas and all of that today. Really, today is really about all of us planting a flag, saying this is our goal. Because right now, the trend is this, and what we want to do is reverse that trend downward for the sake of the individuals experiencing homelessness and for the sake of the safety and security of our community. So that's really what this is about, and certainly would be willing to answer any questions that you may have. And I don't know if you have something to add.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning, Barry Tice, the Director of Pennington County Human Services and the Veteran Service Office. And I think the Sheriff and Mayor have highlighted the pieces nicely to this resolution. I think our community has always demonstrated we can come together, identify good solutions that work well, and we tend to pivot and figure out what we can do better. And so I think this is a good opportunity, the support of the Board of Commissioners, and of course, the City Council, to take a deeper dive into this, so thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Ms. Hagcock, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I appreciate all three of these individuals. Barry's been doing this a long time. I told Brian over and over again, that's the guy to rely on. He's been doing this and helping homeless and moving us forward. And now that the city has teamed up with the Sheriff and Barry, I think it'll be a better solution. Everybody listening at the same table and trying to make the same solution and do the same work together makes a huge difference. So I appreciate all three of you moving forward on this. I know Helene has made the panhandling science in different areas. Basically, it's the truth you give to people, and they don't have to work, and things are handed to them. It makes it pretty easy not to have to go get a job. So some of this is just to move us forward, and a lot of those individuals, maybe we can help move them forward into working and doing other things. I know Barry, with his case management, has done that many times. We have hired some of the people that Barry's had, that have moved forward on these projects. So hopefully that keeps moving forward in a positive way with you three and the solution. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I heard Mr. Drews first.
So I appreciate what you're doing here in bringing stakeholders from the community to be involved, sort of a renewed effort. I think that far too many times, people look towards government to resolving issues such as this, and the government is not the sole answer to this. This has to be a community-involved project in order to reduce. I seriously doubt if you're ever going to eliminate it completely, because there are a certain number of people that are homeless that choose to remain homeless, and they'll tell you so, that they desire to be known as homeless. But I think with the various efforts from nonprofits, the various groups in town, with a renewed effort through the City of Rapid City and through Pennington County, I think that we can make some strong gains on this. I think that Mayor Solomon is correct, that we're seeing it on the increase. We'd like to be able to move forward and see it on the decrease, but it's going to take a lot of effort from many people in order to accomplish that. So thank you for moving forward with this, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Mr. Laster.
Yes, thank you all for moving forward with this and coming together with that. I'd also just like to point out that I'd like to be invited to the table, if you don't mind, not necessarily as a person that has to be a decision maker, but I operate a nonprofit in the area, and I work with a lot of homeless individuals, and we've got processes in place for that. So I'd like to be a part of what y'all are doing and maybe even offering some insight to things that we've learned at the nonprofit that I operate that actually deals with some of these individuals that need a home and how we work through all of that. So I'd like to be at least considered at the table, just if it's not as a member of the board or whatnot, someone there to be a source of information for you, if you don't mind, so.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Mr. Ross Connect, would you like to say something? Before I do?
I think the collaboration between the city and the counties is the first step in addressing the homelessness in Rapid City, and I appreciate every entity getting together to address it, and looking forward to see some positive results.
Thank you, Ron. My comments are exactly what Barry said. We have to learn to pivot. Our community has taken big strides to deal with the addictions and mental health in our community, and that's a small portion of our homeless, and I think we've taken big strides in that. Some of the voluntary stuff is going to be tougher. You know, dealing with addictions is probably one of the toughest, alcohol addiction and drug addictions is one of the toughest for our community, because by the time they get to this point, they've already used up their families, people that look up to them, and sometimes incarceration is the answer sometimes. And I think you guys are recognizing that there's a lot of stuff out there in the community, and trying to bring them in together to work together for a common goal is a positive approach to the situation that's pivoting, because we do have the resources to take care of those who want to be makers, not takers. So with that, I'll close. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions for individuals? I would love to.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve Joint Resolution Number 2023-085 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this brings us to item 16, items from buildings and grounds, and then I'll recognize Construction Project Manager Kevin Burgman.
Good morning, Commissioners. So a couple items before you today. The first is what we presented last meeting for TSP's contract amendment. There was a motion on there that we did not get read and voted on, so just coming back before you today to make sure that we get that in the record.
So pretty much this is cleanup, because we didn't have, didn't read the motion completely. Okay. Is there any questions for Kevin? Any public comment? I come back to the Commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
We've authorized the Chair's signature accepting additional fee amendment to TSP's original contract for the added sum of $487,500 and any applicable reimbursable expenses utilized in Capital Projects Fund.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded by Drews. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, also last meeting, I brought forth a first amendment to the purchase and sales agreement for the First Interstate Bank purchase. That was for clarifying a date for reaching agreement on a leaseback. We've reached that agreement. There is another change in that negotiation. The landlord would be liable for some changes in the building that'll benefit us long-term, adding a little kitchenette counter and some security doors, separating the spaces from the lease space from our space, and then creating a kitchenette that we'll be utilizing in the future with whoever's occupying that building. That's $28,000. It'll be handled in a closing cost adjustment, and the bank will be managing that project through a subcontractor of SECO Construction.
Okay. I do have one speaker request form, but is there any questions from the Commission for Kevin? At this time, I will recognize, I do have a speaker request form from Zeb Hoffman.
I guess the only question I got is, why does the county need to purchase this property? Is this a want or a need for the county to purchase this property?
Well, sir, the Building Committee had done a facility study on what's going to happen with the growth, and that was part of the needs assessment.
Will the county benefit from owning this property?
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So I'm one in disagreement. I agree with you, Zeb. I think for the downtown revitalization, adding another building to the government and taking money off the tax rolls for a property to go to government is something I'm not in favor of. I think the Public Safety Building is also getting remodeled. I didn't know if you know that, but now the city is not paying half of that anymore. They do not have the money to help with that remodel. We also doing a concourse building, which I agreed with. So I'm with you. I guess I don't get why we're moving this forward. The Building Committee is a recommending body. It is not an all-in-one. When we have committees or recommendations from committees, they're not something this board has to go for and has to go with. But unfortunately, at this point, there's people that want to move this forward and believe that government should grow before they take care of the concourse building, before they use the money for PBS building, which is PSB, the Public Safety Building. I believe that the money could be used for that building for other stuff. I just said it before, we have a lot of employees for retention that we need to retain. We need that money for other stuff besides another building. I know the Downtown Revitalization Committee is not happy about this. We did it without asking the rest of the community and made this deal. So not in favor, and I agree with you, Mr. Zeb, and I'm glad you brought this up today, because I don't think the rest of the public knows how many buildings we're getting. We're almost getting a million square footage in Pennington County, and we have 120,000, maybe at most, for constituents in Pennington County. I haven't looked at the comparables compared to other counties, but government's grown big in Pennington County.
Thank you, Deb. Zeb, I would recommend you sit down with Kevin and go through. Today's agenda is taking action on an item that's already been approved, so.
This is an amendment. He can voice his amendment.
The original one.
Voice his opinion today, Lloyd.
Yeah, he can, but I'd be better off sitting down with Kevin and discussing the wants and needs and trying to go.
So has the Pennacan County already purchased this property? Has?
We haven't signed the documents for the closing costs yet, but the purchase agreement has been.
Has been verified, but you have not purchased the property yet.
And paid for it yet.
Not paid for yet.
Correct. It's just you probably did the, put money down on it or whatever.
Yes.
So I guess the only reason I am kind of wondering why we need to purchase property, I mean, we, like Deb said, we have other needs that need to probably be addressed with some money instead of purchasing more property for the county. I just don't, I'm with Deb. I don't feel that government needs to own any more property than what we do.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further questions for Kevin on this? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Move to authorize the Chair's signature on the Second Amendment to Purchase and Sale Agreement for the property located at 14 St. Joseph Street, Rapid City, South Dakota.
Second.
Motion made by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Ms. Hagcock.
Thank you.
Now, this brings us to items from the Highway Department, and I'll recognize Joe Miller, Superintendent of the Highway.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Item A, up in front of you here, is award recommendations for aggregate materials 2023, one and two. These bids were open on October 5th, 2023. The Nichols Creek Pit only had one bidder, so a little backstory on that. We did have a contractor on that pit this 2023 year. For whatever reason, we, for numerous reasons, we needed to terminate that contract, which we did. So then we rebid that and received one bid at a total price of $549,646.39 total, or per ton price of $9.87. We also determined we needed more aggregate material in the Robertson Pit. This pit had three bidders. This pit's just east of town here. It's in a pretty central location to both Rapid City and New Underwood. That bid came in at $239,750 with a per ton cost of $5.25 per ton. Both of these projects and pits are accounted for in our 2024 budget.
Thank you, Joe. This item does have two separate motions. Is there any questions for Joe?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Joe, could you tell us where these pits are located at and what type of material coming out of them?
So it'll be our surfacing gravel. So these are the material that we put down on all of our county roads. Nichols Creek Pit is at the far west end of Deerfield Lake. It's right off of Ditch Creek Road, probably, what, Sean, three miles in there off of Castle Creek? Is that correct? I believe it's Castle Creek Road that it's off of. So it's at the far western part of Pennington County. The material will be used on Gillette Prairie, Mystic, Rochester, East Slate, those roads in the area there.
So is the quality from Nichols Creek the equivalent to the stuff at Benchmark?
We don't know yet. So we hope, we hauled in about 2,000 tons of clay into that pit, along with 200 tons of betonite for an experiment that we're going to do with the direction of LTAP, just kind of an experiment with some betonite and adding some binding material to that limestone to see how it'll hold up. So I guess we don't know what the quality of the material is quite yet. We hope so, but we don't know yet. And then Robertson Pit is in alluvial-type gravel, so it's dug out of the bank there and crushed to our surfacing, the South Dakota DOT surfacing spec, and that is probably, I think it's 10 miles east of town here, straight off, right the corner of 160th or 161 and Highway 44, so. and Highway forty-four, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and do motion one to move to award AGG twenty twenty-three dash one aggregate stockpile Nichols Creek to sixty-three Industries LLC, Rapid City, South Dakota in the amount of five forty-four, six hundred and forty-six thousand thirty-nine cents.
I think it was five forty-nine, six forty-six, thirty-nine. Correct.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Drews, and that's with that amount of five forty-nine, six forty-six, thirty-nine.
Five hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-nine
Any further discussions or questions for Joe? Any further public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number, motion number two would be to move to award AGG twenty twenty-three dash two aggregate stockpile Robertson Pit sixty-three Industries LLC, Rapid City, South Dakota in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine, seven hundred and fifty. That would be moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, this brings us up to item B, and this has two motions also.
Correct. So this is the Transportation Commission, the South Dakota Department of Transportation Commission voted here last spring to allow fifteen percent, excuse me, a fifteen percent contingency upon the contracts that were awarded in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, I believe. So the grant amounts we put in in twenty twenty, our grant cap was at thirty percent. I think it ended up more like fifty, fifty-five percent. The Department of Transportation Commission seen that across the state essentially. So they allowed an additional fifteen percent contingency that you can request, and that's simply what these amendments are. And it equates to about three hundred and fifty thousand extra dollars in grant dollars that we'll get out of the big fund for these. But four of these, excuse me, is it five or six of these will be completed this year, Sean? The one Thunderhead Falls will be next year, right? So six of the seven will be completed this year and then another one will be pushed forward into next year just due to the construction season this year being pretty wet out here. The contractors are going to have to push that to the completion next year. So we'll be able to request that grant additional monies next year, so.
Okay. And this had to do with that they've seen that some of the costs were coming back higher than they thought?
Correct. I mean, counties all across the state with bridge projects, I mean, construction projects in general were all coming in thirty to forty percent above the engineer's estimate that was, that is used to get the big grant dollars, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
This is Joe. I'm understanding the seven grants listed here have all been approved for the big funds at this point in time for the initial big funds.
That is correct. This is just additional dollars above and beyond that. I think these seven total about two million dollars, if I remember correctly. So this additional fifteen percent is another three hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact dollar amount off the top of my head.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would move to approve amendment number one to bridge improvement grant agreements, seven one seven five seven five, seven one seven nine oh five, seven one seven nine oh six, seven one seven nine oh seven, seven one seven nine oh eight, seven one seven nine oh nine, and seven one seven nine ten.
I have a motion from Mr. Drews.
Second.
Seconded from Mr. Lassiter. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Drews, did you want to do motion two?
Sure. Move to authorize the highway superintendent to sign the acknowledgement and certification form on behalf of the Pennington County Highway Department as required by the State of South Dakota Executive Order twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any public comment? Any further from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number C is authorization to purchase one new mini excavator. Joe.
So due to a couple of the projects, Nichols Creek pit not getting completed and one of our Thunderhead Falls projects not getting completed this year, there's some additional dollars in our twenty twenty-three budget that we'd like to utilize to not have to purchase this in twenty twenty-four. This is not directly in our equipment purchase plan. We have, I think, seven or eight backhoes in our equipment fleet. This one is not, the one that we want to replace with this mini excavator has not been used in probably two or three years. It kind of sits in our yard. The mini X that we purchased in twenty twenty-one is probably one of our most sought-after pieces of equipment for all of our divisions. So we see a need for another one. The advantage that the mini excavators have over the backhoes is that you can load them on a car trailer, you can tow them with a three-quarter ton or a one-ton pickup, and you can get to the job site a lot quicker and they do the same job as a backhoe. You can haul a skiddy and a skid steer and a mini excavator to the job site, be more fuel efficient while you're there or going there and not having to get a big transport truck. I guess with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions from the commissioners? I do have one speaker request form on this, Zeb Hoffman.
Thank you. I guess this is another question.
Identify yourself.
Oh, Zeb Hoffman, again. Thank you. This is another, is it a want or a need? Do we need this? We're spending money. I mean, way it looks, we've already probably spent enough. You just said we own a backhoe. Last time I knew, a backhoe can be put on a three-quarter ton pickup too and towed. We probably don't need to keep purchasing new items.
Thank you, Zeb.
I guess to answer your question, we foresee it as a need in the highway department to better utilize the tools that we do have. We don't have any trailers that are capable of carrying a backhoe currently, so we'd have to purchase a trailer, which would be, again, more cost on a piece of equipment that's already, you know, almost to the end of its life, so.
Thanks, Joe.
You don't have a trailer to tow your backhoe on the semi?
Correct, we do.
Okay, so you just.
Had a three-quarter ton pickup.
Well, I, this seems like we're spending money that we don't need to spend. We can use this money for other things. Buying new equipment every year. I want a new tractor, but I have something that will work, so I don't need a new tractor. What I'm trying to say is this is a want, not a need. Thank you.
Thanks, Zeb. Is there any further questions for Joe? Any further discussion from the commission? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Move to authorize highway department to purchase one new two thousand twenty-four Caterpillar three oh five dash oh seven A excavator from Butler Machinery Company, Rapid City, South Dakota in the amount of eighty-nine thousand two hundred dollars and fifty-one cents from Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract oh three two one one nine dash C A two.
Motion's been made.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Did the words pending proper documentation is received need to be inserted in that motion?
If I may, Chair.
Oh, excuse me, I.
I don't amend that.
Yep.
So we were, Connie and I have talked about this, and I think the proper terminology would be contingent upon us obtaining the proper documentation. So I can explain a little bit of that backstory and why we're doing that if you'd like.
Let's get the right motion on the floor first. You want to amend that motion?
Yeah, I'll amend that. So in the amount of eighty-nine thousand two hundred. Motion is requested to authorize the highway department to purchase one new two thousand twenty-four Caterpillar three oh five dash oh seven A excavator from Butler Machinery Company, Rapid City, South Dakota in the amount of eighty-nine thousand two hundred dollars and fifty-one cent, contingent upon obtaining proper documentation from the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract oh three two one one nine dash C A two.
And the seconders okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Now you can explain, Joe.
For a little bit of the reason that we put that contingent in there is we're having a little trouble verifying what Butler is telling us they're selling it for against the Sourcewell Cooperative pricing. Three years ago, when we bought the belly dump trailers, we kind of had the same issue, and we've been requesting that documentation, but we have not got the proper documentation, we feel, from Sourcewell. We've got all of it from Butler Caterpillar, but we want to verify what Butler Caterpillar is giving us are the correct numbers per their Sourcewell contract. So we're just having a little trouble communicating with Sourcewell in that manner. So we want to make sure we, before we do this, we don't, you know, get Bruce to write it up again. I think he, I don't remember exactly what he said at the January meeting this year, but he did bring it up, looking at those Trail Kings. So we've got some emails out to Rod Fortin and Bruce to try and get this figured out and exactly what we need, because counties all over the state use this Sourcewell, so we can't be the only ones that has run into this issue. So what do we do in this instance is kind of what we're trying to figure out. So we won't sign the sales until we get the proper documentation.
Thanks, Joe. Is there any further questions for Joe?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, I'm going to go with Mr. Lassiter first.
Joe, just to kind of, can you give us an overview of kind of what jobs a mini excavator can do that's more appropriate than bringing out your huge backhoe and things of that nature, so we can kind of get an idea?
So essentially, the mini excavator can do all the same jobs, or the backhoe can do all the same jobs. We can just get it there more efficiently, right? The backhoe is about a forty to fifty thousand pound machine, has to be hauled on our transport machine, and the mini X is a lot more versatile on especially slopes. You can close one lane and keep another lane open, not have to close an entire lane of a roadway. Projects like culvert replacements, doing minor grading works, ditch work, stuff like that is what we've used ours for.
Mr. Chair. And what's the actual life of the backhoe that you have? Because you mentioned that it's coming close to the end of its life.
I think it's got about five thousand hours on them. You know, I don't know the exact lifespan of it, but I'm guessing it's up there needing an engine rebuild. There's several other things that are needed on the backhoe. I don't know the exact hours that you would be looking to run that backhoe. They run blades to sometimes ten thousand hours, but they need rebuild, so within that ten thousand hours.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Yeah, I was just going to ask how many hours it had. It just seemed like the trade-in was a little low compared to nineteen ninety-four.
I looked at that last week and I don't remember what is the year of that.
Ninety-four.
It's a nineteen ninety-four. So again, it doesn't get utilized a whole lot in our divisions just because they are so cumbersome to get to and from a job site.
Is that the backhoe that was up at Rochford?
I think we had the, one of the cases up there with the extender hole to break out the ice up there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have another motion on to declare surplus for the purpose of trade on a nineteen ninety-four JCB backhoe serial number four one eight six six seven, county asset number zero zero three four two five.
Lloyd, I would like, I would ask you to not do that motion today until we figure out the Sourcewell and we'll come back to you and surplus that before we trade it in.
Cancel that, okay?
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
I appreciate that you're selling a piece of equipment to get another piece that's more efficient and effective. So in this case, Joe, I believe you are doing the right thing because you're using something that's more efficient than something that isn't going to work for what's the roads for Pennington County. So I'm in agreement with this for that reason. If you were just collecting equipment like Zeb had said, there'd be a difference, but you're selling stuff to be more efficient with other equipment and making sure that this one would get more things done than just a backhoe would. And I know that the excavators are a lot easier to maneuver, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So this one, the highway department wants to hold off on until original paperwork's done and so forth?
Correct.
Okay, so we won't take that up?
Correct.
Thank you, Joe. Next item on our agenda is seventeen D. It's the second reading and final hearing of ordinance fourteen, amendment criteria for constructing and accepting roads and approaches onto highway systems and the county secondary highways, here and after referred to as the county roads. From my understanding, Joe, this is the ordinance and designation of the roads will come as a resolution later.
That is correct.
And so this is something that hasn't been updated in quite a few years, and you've had a public meetings in wall on this and discussions with the community, but you plan on doing some more public meetings in not only New Underwood, but also in Hill City when it comes to designating the actual designation of the roads.
That is correct. So this is kind of a twofold process, right? We updated ordinance fourteen in July of twenty twenty-two. Prior to that, it hadn't been updated since two thousand and five. I don't recall the month exactly, but I believe it's on your sheet there. So it was quite a few years, seventeen to be exact, right? Since it had been looked at and before that, it was in, I believe, the eighties, the eighties or nineties that had been looked at prior to that. So it's due for some amendments. So we made the amendments in July of twenty twenty-two and we're now making the public meetings per Lassiter's request to, once we implement the ordinance the way it reads, right? We're trying to take the way it reads, implement it on county roads. We had the first public meeting in wall, got a little rowdy at times, but we made it through there and took what the public had to say, went back, had another meeting with Mayor Mary Williams, and I believe Chance Trask was there, Jim Johnson and a couple other people. We had a kind of a mini work session. Lassiter was there and kind of talked through some things. With those recommendations, we came back with this ordinance, this, another amendment, changing the number of households on minimum maintenance to the ADT, right? Instead of the number of households. What we're, our goal was with the households is to remain objective. Took anybody biased out of it, right? The number of houses are the number of houses until another one gets built. Seemed like at the time, a good way to go about it. We learned from that meeting in wall that they didn't necessarily like that methodology. So we have data with the ADT that our department has collected over, I looked at that and I can pull data probably all the way from nineteen ninety-seven is the latest that I've seen. So twenty-five years worth of data. And you get to looking back through some of that data on the ADT and a lot of it hasn't changed. And we've counted anywhere from April to October. So with that, that's one of the main changes in this. The ordinance amendment is going from the number of households on the minimum maintenance to an ADT. The other one is taking the no maintenance out of there. We let the designation in there, because as you, as we get another map and some other stuff out there, you'll see that there's some section line roads that by state statute we're responsible for. So the county's commission's going to have to make a choice whether they want to either start maintaining those section line roads or putting no maintenance designation on those or put a minimum maintenance designation on those. Those are on the map that are on New Underwood. I think there's twenty or twenty-five additional miles that aren't, they're on section lines, but they're not accounted for. Oh, let's see here. I did send out, I had Greg Vavra from LTAP help me out with sending out an email to all of the other counties, and we've got probably thirty-five or forty responses, and there's probably a half a dozen or more of other counties that do use this minimum maintenance, no maintenance jurisdiction, several that don't, but a lot of those have organized townships who do use that designation. So with that, I guess I will stand, I can speak a little bit to the resolution part of it too, I guess. I forgot about that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Joe, yesterday I sent you that email relative to when we were in wall and they were concerned about the wording. In general, gravel surfaces may be maintained twice a year. Mowing operations may occur twice a year. Snow removal may, and they wanted to reword that to maybe at a minimal, just so that.
Correct. And that's one of the changes that we're, we will make, bring it back to the next reading, correct? I missed that. That was my first bullet point. I apologize. But we will change that verbiage in the minimum maintenance to will maintain twice a year, will mow twice a year. And I don't remember, we'll do the snow removal at six inches or less.
It's not like if there's another situation where they need the highway department, they can call. It's not like if there's a another situation where they need the highway department, they can call the the uh, foreman in Wall and he seemed to be pretty receptive to going out there and taking care of people's problems.
Correct. You know, what we're doing is is doing, we're putting a label on things that we're kind of already doing. We're kind of, the the roads with that less than lesser A D T, we're not maintaining as much, right? We're not maintaining those to the same standards where we would have been like Sage Creek at four hundred cars a day. That almost once a week that that needed maintained, right? If we have the manpower. So yeah, we're we're putting a label on something that we're kind of already doing. Um, and a lot of this came to light with the, not only the new roads that are being, you know, with all the development that's coming on. Wise Art is one of the ones that kind of kind of comes to the forefront um, that in the most recent past in one fifty-third that you guys have designated no maintenance. Because there's been development on a section line and the county doesn't want to maintain those roads. So with that, is there any more on that?
Oh, Chair. So do we have to, this is, do we have to tell you that you're, that we'd like it that in general gravel surfaces will be maintained twice a year, mowing will be occur twice a year and snow removal will occur when amounts meet six inches minimum?
Correct. We will make those changes and bring that back at, to the next meeting. Um,
So we're not voting on this today, Joe?
So we continue it.
Or we're just voting on your changes, aren't we?
Correct.
One person at a time. Go ahead.
So we're, so we're voting on the changes of the minimum maintenance, right?
I I don't know the exact process. I don't know if Megan or Jayers.
Do you have to add it today to be?
I don't know if you need to vote on it today to move it to the next reading or or what, how that goes. So.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So probably the cleanest way to do it would be to vote on any changes that you want. And then between now and the next reading, which you would just continue the item until the next, well, available, I guess the next Board of Commissioner meeting. Um, and then between then and the next meeting, we'll make those changes and bring it back as a clean version. My preference is always for the last vote to be on a clean version without any changes.
Okay, so the minimum maintenance, that would be my motion is change the surfaces will uh, be maintained twice a year, mowing operations will occur twice a year and snow removal will occur when amounts meet six inches minimum.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. You you understand what they're doing?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners on this side?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Um, something, you know, we've had a lot of discussion on this and one of the things that, I don't know, maybe we have asked this question, maybe we haven't, maybe it's just because there's been so much conversation on it. Is there any requirement from the state on any roads that are being utilized as commercial roads to be maintained at a certain level? If they're highway county roads, I mean, it would be something to look into to make sure that we're not. I know a lot of those individuals that live out there are commercial use as well. So I guess that's my biggest question.
So it's the state statute, from my understanding, and and Megan, I know you don't have a whole lot of research or didn't have a whole lot of time on it, but from my understanding of the statutes, the state really leaves that up to you, the county commission, as to how you want to maintain those roads.
I actually didn't do research.
No.
Had some time. Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. Yeah, so I just reviewed all of the statutes again this morning. Um, and essentially the way that the legislature has set up the statutory scheme is it allows the Board of Commissioners to make that decision on um, how much they are going to maintain some of those secondary roads. Now, if it's one of our main roads, I can't remember what their quote, Joe, primary roads. Now, we do have to get permission to make changes to those. Um, and D O T has to be involved in that. But for our secondary roads, as long as we follow those statutory requirements to set the designation either as minimum maintenance, no maintenance, full maintenance, which we don't have to do anything for. Um, then really the state kind of leaves that up to us to make that decision.
Okay.
Thank you, Megan.
So Chair.
Hi, Tom.
Here's, um, I would agree, I agree with the changes. Um, Joe, you have worked very hard and you have went to many, many meetings on this on full maintenance, minimum maintenance and no maintenance, also on the whole ordinance. So I thank you for that. The only issue I'm having is people are pretty hot still out there. Um, and we're saying um, budgetary reasons and we're actually saying it on minimum maintenance. Um, I don't know how to find that solution with you and our our board, but um, my issue is this ag is a billion dollar business and we know that. These are commercial bills businessmen um, that are saying that minimum's not going to work for some of their areas because the different timing of the year of how they do their cattle and and the different areas um, and timing where that happens. So those A D Ts, and you're right, depending on those A D Ts in the different areas, how does that work? Then um, we're having people, we we opted on the the cattle guards, up to five hundred on the on the ranchers. We've done a few other things that um, people are just hot out in in eastern part of South Dakota or uh, Pennington County. So I don't know how you find that standard before we do the resolution on uh, Wall area. I don't know about Ron's area at this point. I've only been to a few meetings in the in the Wall area. But how we make that solution with the ranchers and farmers when they have business to do on minimum maintenance roads? And not, uh, I I don't know how you do the difference on them. So they get the service they need in order to do the business they need to get done. That's my bottom line. We do that for any other business in Rapid City. We do it in 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 different areas in Pennington County in order to make that work for them. How do we do this for the ranchers and farmers? Um, I don't know, maybe you don't have that answer, but there's got to be something different than what we're doing right now, Joe, than just the the full and the and the minimum. Uh, and the A D T and maybe the A D T is the key. Um, that they say, okay, Joe, come in here in October, check this out, see if it's different than you've had it before. Even if it's not different, Joe, and it's done ten years, check it out because ten years ago might have been a lot different than today. Like you said, you had the A D Ts, you've been doing your job. You guys have been doing your da- job. Your goal is to make some overlays with uh, base course or whatever for these areas, but um, what they're trying to say in Wall, the farmers and ranchers, they need your help. They need this commission's help to get these roads so they can be a farm to market roads for them and be um, safe for their children and their families um, to drive on them. Um, it's not going to be perfect. There's always um, you already know moisture problems in other areas. But they're asking you and they're, and they keep, I don't know, they're calling Travis, they're calling me. I don't know if they're calling the other commissioners. But they're saying, Deb, we need your help. So anything we can do possibly um, to make that difference where these ranchers and farmers, um, I don't know what that is for A D T. I don't, like I said, Joe, but I know you're trying your best and you only have a certain amount of money and staffing. And I know that you could, you can have all the money in the world al- also, I've learned from Rapid City to do roads and maintenance, but uh, you gotta have the staff and the companies to do it. So um, there's got to be um, some kind of give in this area because um, again, uh, my heart is for the ranchers and farmers out there, but it also is for uh, the work you do in your team because you guys are amazing. And you've made a difference with Colton. So I've been listening to these meetings and I don't know exactly how we come to that solution. But it's got to be something so these people understand that you're working for them, Joe, not against them. So I know you're not trying to, but um, they they just need you. They need those roads. That's, they don't need much from Pennington County, but they need those roads for their business.
Joe. I I hear that. Um, you know, this was one of the first stabs I took at a, at an ordinance amendment, right? Um, in my career here, um, kind of understanding why the previous administrations didn't tackle this, right? Um, it's something that I think, uh, I I stated it earlier that it's generally something we're we're kind of already doing. Um, we're we're not focusing on those less traveled roads as much as we are the more highly traveled roads. So what the answer is, I don't know. I mean, if you if you want to, in my opinion, to maintain these to the, to a let me back up there. We have a another duty to the public also, right? That aren't the farmers and ranchers out there to say, hey, this road's maybe not as good as the one that you just got off of to to give them a kind of a warning. Everybody's seen the the minimum maintenance signs travel at your own risk, right? So we have a lot of tourists in this county, right? Maybe not so much the Wall area. Probably a lot of pheasant hunters and small game hunters, deer hunters, all sorts of hunters come to the area to hunt big game, small game, the those types of things. So we also have a duty to those people to warn them of the the type of road that they're traveling on. Um, I don't know the answer. This the, as you said, it has been a very contentious thing and I think we've tried to listen and compromise as much as we can. Um, to maintain all, Wall has two hundred and fifty um, miles of of gravel road. Um, as we all learned from that, the meeting in in Wall last week, you know, a blade can successfully maintain um, three to five miles an hour. So I mean, at at most, we can get ten miles a day in good conditions, in favorable conditions. So you know, if if you want to buy another three, four blades to maintain the roads, you know, that's, I mean, that's the other, the other side of the coin. Um, you know, and that's not maintaining them all the time. We've done a lot better jobs here in in the recent past and hopefully Zeb and and Chance can ta- can attest to that of being out there. Um, you know, prior to me being here, uh, the the M O of the county, I guess, or the operating procedure for our blades was only if there's moisture, that's the only time our blades move. And that's not the case anymore. We've learned a lot from the trainings with both LTAP and and other people coming in um, from other county organizations that, hey, you don't have to just maintain when it's wet out. You can still do some good maintaining on some of these these drier roads and and ma- doing some maintenance plating. So um, what the answer is, I don't know. Um, I I'm open to all options. I mean, if you guys want to leave the roads as is, that's that's up to you, right? Um, this is just what we're proposing and we saw a need when we were getting all the development for you guys to be able to designate some of these things so we don't have to take them onto the county highway system and expend more funds. Um, the map I sent out from from New Underwood yesterday um, has, I believe, twenty-five additional miles that are on section lines. That are gonna need to have, when we, when we do the resolution, we need to decide. Does the county want to do those as a minimum maintenance? Do we want to maintain them as no maintenance? Um, now the Wall area doesn't have a whole lot of those just because they have organized townships. Right? Um, the the east of, I would say, the Cheyenne River to to New Underwood, there isn't an organized township. The only one that's down there is Scenic. So there's a lot of unorganized road territory there and that's why we're seeing a lot of these new roads on section lines. So do I know the exact answer? No, this was our stab at it. Um, and this is, you know, we put our, we spent a a lot of time and and money and resources. We we even hired an engineering firm to go out there and take a look at all this stuff and identify the roads that aren't currently on our system that by state statute are ours. Um, so I mean, we've spent a lot of time, money and resources. Do I know the exact answer? No. This is, this is our stab at it. Um, you know, we're we're open for options and and ideas.
Chair. So time, money and resources. Um, so in in the eastern part of, and I've been here for nine years. I feel that the money has been more on the west side. For the tourism, um, not for dust. People don't want dust. It it isn't for their livelihood. It's so they don't have dust on their roads that we have spent thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, because they don't like dust. Farmers and ranchers aren't saying dust. They're saying maintain roads that actually they can do their business on. So uh, we've done base course over there. We've done bridges. We've done roads. We've done all kinds of things in that area. And it's based on A D T in a sense, but also because people don't want dust. So um, that's why I was trying to say when we were doing some of the mag water and the different things that we, people wanted us to go do for free. Um, these, the ranchers or farmers are telling us, we don't want free. We're saying, we do a business, a billion dollar business, and we need your help. To me, that's a lot different than just the tourism is industry at this point because they're number one. And if we want to do tourism, they're number two. So for this area being number one, um, this should be, um, the road should be maintained to a certain level, Joe, that they can maintain a business and feel safe for their families and their business to 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 do that South Dakota driven ag um, stuff. So um, I'll keep fighting for them because for that reason, again, I've been here nine years. A lot of the money has been poured into the western part. It's time maybe that we do something different in the eastern part and put some extra money or blades or something. So these people can continue to do their business and you can, as Joe, as a superintendent, feel satisfied that um, the ranchers and farmers that you're taking care of out there are feeling that um, Pennington County does make a difference for them. So that's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, this is the ordinance and later you're going to be doing assessment of the of of the roads and bringing that back later.
So that's uh, correct, Lloyd. So to designate roads needs to be done by resolution per to the state statute. Um, Megan can probably speak to that a little bit better, but per the state statute, all roads have to be on or off our system by resolution. So we either have to designate them a no maintenance road, uh, minimum maintenance road, or fully maintain them on our system. And that's all done by resolution. The last resolution that was done by this commission was done in twenty twelve. Um, so that's another big reason that we took a look, a good hard look at this. This hasn't been done in ten years since Heine was here. Um, so we took a good and hard look at it and and that's, we're making some changes. They're trying to to stretch our county taxpayer dollars as far as we can, you know, and um, Deb, to your point, we we did spend quite a bit of money. I don't know, I don't have the final dollar dollar figure on upgrading a road that was far overdue for uh, uh, hard surface um, in Sage Creek Road. We spent a lot of time and resources down there this year and I get what you're saying. Um, you know, with Sheridan Lake Road and Rochford Road, there's a lot of dollars being poured into that. Um, you know, there's fifty million dollars right there in those two projects. Unfortunately, those were were projects I I was inherited. So we got those to the fruition, not to say that they, you know, Sheridan Lake Road was definitely needed. Rochford Road um, is needed. Um, so you know, there's, we're we're trying to focus on the eastern part a little bit more uh, now that we've got a lot of those projects. And we can't forget uh, the Rapid Valley area too. We've got eleven thousand residents in the Rapid Valley area that is currently still under our jurisdiction also.
Mr. Laster is next in.
Mr. Chair. All right, Joe. If you're fully staffed in Wall, do you see any problem maintaining the roads at full maintenance, all of them? When you're fully staffed?
I I think we already.
Well, I was gonna say barring a major issue of a road washout or anything, if you had just standard general maintenance and operational and you were fully staffed at all times, would you be, do you believe that you'd at least be able to do full maintenance on all the roads?
So we've, we've been full staffed. Um, I mean, we were full staffed when I started. Uh, we lost a couple of people. And we've been full staffed in Wall for I guess I don't know, Sean, any idea? Six, eight months. Um, which means all, you know, we have five people plus the foreman down there, um, which is more than any of the other divisions, the New Underwood Division and the Hill City Division. Um, which all have their challenges. Um, I would say, yes, we already have challenges maintaining those roads to a full, to what I would call a full maintenance standard. Right?
When you're full staffed, you're still having those problems.
Agree that we are still having, or we have had challenges since I started. Um, a lot of that was because a lot of it was left and neglected. Um, and we're, we were playing catch up and we're still trying to play catch up, but um, as a fully staffed with four blades and and five individuals, um, I don't think we can successfully maintain two hundred and fifty miles of gravel with with those people.
So, Mr. Chair. So we've, we're doing a road study. We've done a road study. You've put a lot of time and effort in that. Have we even looked at what maybe done a needs assessment on the roads and how we can get to the point to make sure that we're maintaining appropriately? I mean, if you're struggling with what you currently have fully staffed, do you need more, do you need another machine? Do you need uh, another you know, F T E for something out there? I mean, have we done a needs assessment on your actual needs in that particular area to make sure that we have you with everything that you need to maintain out there? Because if you, if you're having a hard time maintaining with just, with your full staff, what your current um, conditions are, then maybe you're understaffed and you're, even though you're fully staffed. Does that make sense? You're under F T Es, you're under equipment and things of that nature.
Correct. I mean, the the equipment is the biggest thing because, you know, even if you, because everybody knows that we pulled an individual, or pulled an F T E from the Wall Division about two years ago. Um, after it was left vacant for almost a year. Um, and wasn't ever utilized, wasn't asked for help. Um, a lot of that now we've learned was our leadership down there, but ne- nevertheless, four blades, you know, with five people, you you still have something else, you know. Um, so Um, so if you're gonna add an FTE, you need to add an, at least one or two more machines down there to successfully maintain these roads in a, it, what I would say a full maintenance road needs to be maintained. Um, to answer your question on the needs assessment, we have not done a needs assessment. We're doing a master transportation plan study right now. Uh, but to my knowledge, I don't think a needs assessment has ever been done.
Sure. Mr. Drews.
So, Joe, um, you talked about townships. Uh, do any of our organized townships, do they maintain their own roads?
As far as I know, they do, yes. I don't know how many miles each, there's a I believe there's twenty-one townships, uh, in the Wall area.
Do, do some of those contract with the county to do that maintenance or not?
Um, no, not to my knowledge. There's only one township that we do any sort of business with, and that's the Scenic Township. And they maintain a good portion of our roads down in the, the Kanata Basin down there, scenic area. Um, I believe they maintain about, I don't even want to throw a number out there. I believe it's between fifty and seventy-five miles. So that would be on top of the other two hundred and fifty miles that's in the Wall Division. It kind of splits between the Wall and New Underwood Division that aren't really accounted for in all of our miles, right? There are miles, but the, the scenic township maintains them and we pay them. I think the limit, uh, in twenty twenty-three was thirty-five thousand dollars. Could we just renegotiated that, what, last year? So.
Followed, Mr. Chair. As I was reading ordinance fourteen, apparently I've never seen this before, but it talks about the national bridge inventory. So how many of our hundred and twenty-seven bridges are on that national?
All of them.
All of them are. Okay.
That, that national bridge inventory is just, so, i- i- if, if it's longer than twenty feet.
Okay.
Um, lengthwise, I believe it's along, I don't remember the exact, I believe it's along the road center line, if, as measured. If it's longer than twenty feet, it's on the national bridge inventory, which is federally regulated to be basically all the, the regulations that go along with that.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Raskin.
Joe, can you explain to the commission how traffic counts determine the degree of a road maintenance and upgrades? Because I think that's what I've learned over the last four years when I go to these meetings, uh, in Pierre and Sioux Falls and I, uh, it seems to me, once the traffic counts at a certain threshold, then you, uh, there's a, an additional upgrades that are typically done based on industry standards.
Yeah, a- and, um, our previous ordinance fourteen, I believe it said, uh, and I believe it actually still says it in here. Um, any roads above two hundred and fifty ADT may be paved. So, um, if you look at, there's a, there's a book out there that SDSU and our LTAP group helped the, the federal, uh, Highway Administration write. It's the Gravel Roads Man- Manual. Um, and the cutoff is about a hundred and fifty ADT to where you can successfully maintain a gravel road. Um, anything over that, you need to look, start looking at other sorts of treatments to, to six, save both time, money and resources. Um, otherwise you're kind of just, uh, wasting your time if you, if it's over a hundred and fifty ADT.
And are side by sides considered a vehicle relative to traffic counts?
As far as, I mean, in the state of South Dakota, yes, they are. I mean, we can dis- disseminate them. As far as, you know, we can say, this was a truck, this was a car, um, and I don't, Eric, you're, you happen to be here. How many different ones can we disseminate?
I believe there's uh, Eric Radke, um, Pink Cunningham Highway Project Manager. Um, there's Federal Highway Administration classification in the traffic counts, and I believe it's thirteen different classifications that you can filter vehicles out. It goes all the way down to a person riding a bicycle, motorcycle. Um, we have built in a way to pull out UTVs and ATVs based on a wheel span. But part of that is, some of these UTVs are as large as vehicles right now. So there's, there's probably even a little bit more vehicles or more UTVs on the roads up in the hills that are classified as cars or trucks than we're actually getting, but we're, we're trying to filter something out just to see what, what's out there.
Thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Heck, do you mind if I go to our public speakers? Uh, we have two speaker requests.
Just one thing, Lloyd, and it's quick. Farmers and ranchers have been out in Pennington County a long time. They've been out east a long time. So if we're gonna go by ADT, I'm farming a ranch, you're gonna be in trouble. That's, that's my issue because they were here first. So telling them now that now we got a new system, um, we can't do your business, we can't do your ranch and farm at this point. Um, number one, what that, does that do to your property values when you try to sell a ranch when it doesn't, isn't maintained to be able to run a ranch in full capacity? Again, that's why I said it's a little bit different. Because they've been here a long time with that same ADT and some of them have grown their businesses. So that's not gonna be fifty cars. That's gonna be ten trucks. That's gonna be twelve vehicles from their, their families. So, um, that's why I'm trying to say we need to find some kind of solution with that because again, they were here before we were with these roads and these areas. And now we're saying, okay, um, we know you've been here a long time, but now we got a new standard. Um, that's what I'm saying, is there's gotta be something for these guys to be able to operate their business, and that's all they're asking. So, anything we can do to not change that to make sure they are taken care of, it's huge. The cattle to market is huge. It's millions of dollars. It's not like a ten thousand or ATV business. It's something that they lose millions of dollars and South Dakota has proven that egg is number one. So, again, very important and something, I, I don't know, Joe, hopefully we can work this out in a way, and I know you can because you're, you've always done really good at everything you've done for solutions. So, um, just something to, to put in mind, that they were there first, that they are, that's a farming and ranching business. You cannot take care of everybody all the time, but if it's, if it's based on budget, it's huge for Pennington County to take care of our ag industry. So, that's my two cents.
Thanks. I'm gonna make one comment since I haven't really spoke on this before we go to our public speakers. You know, uh, as you said, Joe, this is the ordinance that hasn't been updated and a lot of it come forth on section line roads. That, that was the main reason. But then we've had some other stuff come forward. You do later on is to designate these roads, you'll have to come back to resolution. So, so there will be another time. I'm letting you folks know out there that when it comes to those roads, we'll have this discussion all over again. Right now, we do have a problem and he's trying to fix some of these section line roads that, you know, uh, houses on them, the number of houses or the number traveled, you know, we, we need to make some, to, some moves on that. That's what he's trying to do with this ordinance. It's not trying to deteriorate from any corporate or any area at this point in time. So I just wanted to make that clear as this ordinance is before I let you guys come up that it's, there's still gonna be another time to come forward. And I, and I, I will absolutely uh, say this commission has went above and beyond to meet with the residents. Um, eh, with you guys. I mean, they've really worked hard with you guys. I mean, we had all five commissioners out there a week ago. So I just wanted to pass that on. That there's been some great, and not only that, but, you know, with the new, uh, Colton, with the new one, there's been some improvements and you guys even acknowledged that as we were there, that there's been improvements. And so I just wanted to, let's not always forget about some of the improvements that we've, that has happened and and try to move forward. Do you have any final comments before I go?
Yeah, if I, if I may, um, Deb, and I just want to respond, the, the minimum maintenance designation is a minimum, right? It doesn't mean that that's all we have to do. You know, if, if we have the time and resources to do it or there's an issue, we'll go address it, right? We're not, uh, Sean, you know, said it earlier to me this morning, um, it costs a whole lot more to rebuild a road and I think Rapid City's figuring that out, right? The, it costs a whole lot more to rebuild a road than it does to maintain a road. So we're gonna do our darndest to, to make sure that we maintain these roads to a standard that can be used by the ag. You know, the, the townships have several mi- minimum maintenance roads, you know, counties throughout the state um, have this jurisdiction with minimum maintenance and, and they're still surviving also, right? So we're not the, the only ones, uh, for whatever reason, Pennington County had never looked at it, at the, the legislation. Um, so we're trying to do our best with what we've been given and the tools that are in our toolbox. Um, the, again, it's, it's a minimum number, right? And I agree with the changes that will, right? We were trying to not lock ourselves into not being able to do more was the, was the intention with the word may, right? Um, so with that being said, the, the second part of this is the resolution, right? The commission can, when we bring forward the resolution, if the commission wants to say, no, we're maintaining the roads the way they are, they're all gonna be full maintenance, that's when, the, that's when that's gonna get designated.
Yep.
Right now, nothing has changed. There's been no, no changes in our, our levels of maintenance. Um, no signs have gone up. No, nothing has changed at this point. Even after this, the, this ordinance is passed, nothing will change. Um, other than any new roads that may come onto the system due to, to development, this gives the commission the tools in their toolbox to be able to say, no, even though that's on a section line, that's your driveway, that's a no maintenance road, county's not maintaining it.
Yep.
Right? So that's, it, it's all a, a process. Um, again, it, it's a minimum number of times. It's not what we're gonna do. It's not what we want to do anyways. Um, we're going to maintain it to the best of our abilities and that's what, all we can do at this point. So.
Thanks, Joe. I'm gonna go to our speakers at this point in time. Uh, Zeb, since you've already been up twice, I'm gonna go to Chance, give him the floor. That's Chance Trask, right? Okay, thanks, Chance.
I'm Chance Trask, Wall Creighton area. I've lived in and around Wall my whole life. And the roads have been far better than they even are today. And there's never been more than four blades in Wall. So we need two or three more blades to maintain it to the full standards. They've been full standards my whole life and far beyond with four blades. And I, I don't see where we need three more blades to do the same job they did ten years ago. And there's a, the neighbor, she wrote a perfect letter. It's in your packet that everyone should read, that describes what everyone is feeling with. This is, it couldn't have been wrote any better, how she did it. And another question Deb hit on it just briefly was property values. And I'm just gonna pick on her because I know she has a commercial business. If she has a motel on a minimum maintenance road, how well disposed that will rent? You know, who wants to, to drive on vacation down a minimum maintenance road to motel? Finally, she's like, I'm not renting this very often. I'm, I'm out. I'm just gonna sell it. I'm done. How, how's that gonna affect the sale of that motel? And this applies to your house. This, this is Hill City. This is New Underwood. It's everywhere. It's everyone's houses. Our property values, so we're expected to pay the same property taxes. While our value of our property has been diminished. But we have to have these roads to get to and from. Every business out there is a commercial business where there's no one out there that just lives in the middle of nowhere and hunts rabbits and gathers river out of the, water out of the river. Eh, every person that's there is a commercial business. It's just, it's unbelievable. And we're wanted. We're fully staffed. We have Colton. Colton's doing a good job. Why we can't just continue the way we've been and try it for a while?
Yeah.
And we've all, and, and again, we've always had the same number of blades. And, you know, ten years ago, the blades were smaller and and, and now we're doing Sage Creek is hard surfaced. Creighton Road is hard surfaced. And in the five-year plan, there's a few more roads that are hard, are proposed to be hard surfaced. That will all be less and less miles that the blades will have to maintain each. I don't understand where the issue is coming from here. We're really not saving any money. We're not moving any stuff anywhere.
Joe, it's their time to speak. You got two speakers. Okay.
Go ahead, Chance.
I, I guess that kind of just wraps it up. I mean, we're finally fully staffed. The roads have been neglected for some time with our past leadership and like they've said, let's give it a chance to get it, to get it back again. And we got good gravel and we have in the five-year plan proposed to gravel certain areas. Let's give it a try and see if it, you know, maybe it is a disaster and you have to revisit this at a later date, but I mean, I feel like we're getting the cart in front of the horse here a little bit. Unless we're, let's just give it a try for a while. We're staffed. We have all the equipment that we need. Uh, before we jumped, jump into this deal fully.
Thanks, Chance. I just wanted to reiterate that at this point in time, this is just the ordinance and as I discussed, the designation could change. I mean, absolutely. So I, and I, I seen you guys shake your head up back there when I said that, that
Yeah.
And so there'll be another time, but we do have the section lines that we have to worry about and, and so forth. And thank you for bringing up, uh, you know, things that, there's been improvements and why not, uh, that's exactly what I said at your guys' meeting is give us some time to see how this works out. The, the designation, Joe, is, is not gonna happen for quite a while. I'm, I'm guessing. You have to go out and do an assessment and get some information back before that comes forward. I just want to clarify for these young guys, for these gentlemen, somebody know.
Yeah, uh, Joe Miller again, Pennington County Highway Department. Um, correct. I mean, the resolution, we've got a lot of work left to do before that resolution comes in front of you. I mean, uh, we've nee- we need to have a meeting in, in New Underwood, hopefully before Travis is, is gone, um, and another meeting in Hill City. Just as long as it took before the la- for this first one to come up, right?
I'm like, wow, Joe's writing me off already.
No, I, I.
Are you leaving Travis?
Apparently Joe says I am.
So, okay. I mean, it's, there's a long time before that resolution's gonna be in front of you. There's a lot of work left to do. Um, so, yeah.
I do.
Like, I just feel minimum maintenance is very slippery slope. And once you're designated with that, it'd be easy to go back at a later date when you still have the fixed budget. Oh, with still limited resources. And, and that's just opening the door to less and less and less as the years progress. It might not happen for five years or ten years, but we're already designated with that label. And that, and that's just a, a good reason to give that particular label less.
But you understand that's not what we're doing here today.
Yes, I do understand. I just, um.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Laster.
And I'd like to point out too, some of this ordinance is not necessarily dealing with Wall. I know it feels like it might be dealing with Wall. But we've got roads that have come, that individuals have come in, they're building a home on their property. And then they don't want to meet ordinance fourteen standards to the width of the road, um, that, I don't know, Joe, all the, all the engineering specs of the road. Well, we don't want those to come on the county to be maintaining a twelve-foot road rather than what meets ordinance fourteen standards. So there has to be a way that we can at least uh, as a county, say, look, eh, we're gonna give you the variance, but we're also gonna designate you as a no maintenance or a, or a minimum maintenance road because you're unwilling or you can't meet ordinance fourteen standards based on where you're at. So even if none of this applies to Wall, if all of Wall is a hundred percent full maintenance, we still have to have this in the ordinance because as these roads come into our, you know, come into existence, we have to be able to say, all right, you're asking for a variance. Here's the restriction that the county's gonna say. We're not coming to maintain it because you don't meet these criteria if you're asking for a variance. So I do understand, and I think you, I think you know, Chance, that I do understand that. I think whenever we were all out there the other night, you, you, you made your points very clear that um, you're concerned with the potential of being considered a minimal maintenance. And I think we've heard that. And we have to designate that through a resolution and we don't have a resolution like that before us.
Yeah, I understand. Nothing's happening today. Just um, be on the record and let everybody know how we're feeling and what, what's going on in our minds. I mean, it's, it's fear. This is our only access to and from. In many cases, in my cases especially, there's no alternate route. If that road becomes in such a shape where it's untravelable, I'm sunk. I, I have no other way in and out. And I didn't, oh, I was born there, but we didn't build that place there in hopes that road would come to us. We built it because there was a road there. It's been full maintenance forever. We would have never built there or developed a place the way we have without access, without good reliable access.
And, thanks, I understand. Go ahead, Mr. Drews.
Question for Chance. Chance, just picking up on your comments of saying the roads used to be, uh, in better condition than what they are today. Uh, do you think that the amount of traffic, especially truck traffic, has not degraded those roads to the point where they require a lot more maintenance in order to keep them in that condition now?
There, I would say there is a lot more truck traffic than there used to be. The yields are far better than they were ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. Instead of maybe forty bushel average on wheat, say, maybe eighties and nineties now. So that's gonna be double the truck traffic. There might not be as much passenger car traffic, but the commercial and truck traffic is, is way more. Even in, I don't farm, but we have cattle. Our calves used to weigh four fifty, four hundred, four fifty. Now we Now we sell six hundred pound calves. So there's more truckloads and the trucks are heavier per load. Just because, you know, everything's more efficient, we have to do more with less, we have to do better. And so, everything's getting, and I'm, I'm sure it is beating the roads up more with all those trucks. I might have couldn't help but not.
Uh, my point is, is I, I, I don't know if you can continue to maintain at the same level you did twenty years ago and have the roads in the condition that you're describing that they were in at that point in time without doing more maintenance on it at this point in time.
I think if they were like they are today, I don't think anyone would complain. The way they are today, there's blades out when I came to town today and with the hard surfacing that done in Creighton, there's potholes in it and there's a few things need fixed. Everyone would pretty much say the roads are acceptable today. But, when, when you get designated this minimum standard, what's it gonna be then? That's what everybody's fear is, what's it gonna be then? We're okay with it now, we're just afraid of then.
Thank you.
I think we, yeah, I think the commission understands that.
If I may, just one piece of, of information, thank you Gary for that, that question and, and comment, Chance, you know, trucks and the equipment, tractors, calves, all of it's more nowadays than it was twenty years ago. So again, it does take more to maintain that. Um, I asked Greg Valvera from LTAP, um, he's kind of our go-to guy for the local, he's, uh, Local Transportation Assistance Program. How many cars, you know, and, and we were asked at the, the couple meetings in Wall and I didn't have the answer, so I finally found a good reliable source on the answer of how many cars a day does one truck e- equal? One eighty thousand pound truck, right? Not the, the ninety-five thousand, not the hundred and five thousand pound trucks that we see in the state of South Dakota, but one eighty thousand pound truck is the equivalent to nine thousand car trips. That's a lot of, I mean, and that's structural damage, right? That's not, and, and Greg and I had about a twenty-minute conversation on this last week. That's, that's structural damage, not the damage to the gravel roadway of, you know, that front tire picks up a piece of gravel, now it's gonna bounce off the, the next duel and keep going on, and it's gonna bounce your, your, your gravel off the road and into the ditch, which deteriorates your roads and creates those washboards, so.
Oh Chair.
We'll be good with that.
I have a, I have a question, Joe. So if it's eighty thousand pound truck is nine thousand cars a day, do you count every truck as nine thousand on your ADT?
So that's why we have a designation in our, our minimum maintenance there. It's either or, right? If it's thirty cars a day or ten thousand, or, excuse me, ten thousand.
Ten trucks.
Ten trucks a day, right? Cause that's where we feel that designation is. And that's what we heard at the first meeting in Wall, well, the trucks, the truck traffic, right? So we took that truck traffic and again, we used, um, Greg Valvera again, said, hey, is this number, you know, an adequate number to, you know, if, if it's less than ten trucks a day, can we successfully maintain it as a minimum, quote-unquote, minimum maintenance road? Now, mind you, Greg is, was a, a highway superintendent for twenty-some years, um, has a lot of experience throughout the state and his, his answer was, yes, if it's less than ten trucks a car, a day, or thirty cars a day, you can successfully maintain that as a minimum maintenance road.
So Joe, it doesn't make sense, if you're saying eighty thousand pound trucks, and I know these guys have eighty thousand pound trucks, equal to nine thousand cars a day. Then that nine thousand cars a day, meaning one truck, is going to destroy a road
So
a lot faster, so if you take ten trucks times ninety, or nine thousand cars a day, then their ADT goes up based on
It's not, you can't count it that way. It's structural damage, right? Doesn't, the two don't equate, right? It's structural damage to your road.
But that's what I'm saying. So it's a business with a truck instead of nine thousand cars a day that's destroying the road. So if it was destroying the road with, um, twenty thousand cars a day, the ADT would go up because that would make the difference between destroying a road or not. Meaning, if your truck is causing the same issues as nine thousand car, cars a day from the ADT, you see what I'm saying, if the ADT, I guess I'm not
I, I see what you're saying, but the two don't equate, right? It's, it's the amount of truck, the truck weighs more, has more axles, right, it weighs more, right? So it would be the equivalent to the car traveling across that same piece of road and that road deflecting nine thousand ti- times, right?
Right.
But one truck going over that road deflects it the same as nine thousand cars. So a lot of it's used for pavement type stuff, not necessarily gravel. It's just an equivalent that a lot of people use, um, you know, may not be adequate uh, to use that number in here, but I thought that might be a valuable piece of information for the commission to use.
What you're kinda trying to say is, one truck far exceeds thirty car trips. If, right, if, if it's ten, ten trucks and thirty cars and you pass over it with one truck, it's equal to nine thousand cars, we're good to go, full maintenance.
That's my point, but
Okay, we, we need to move on. Thanks, Joe, and
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chance. Uh, Zeb? And I'll just repeat what I said, this is about the ordinance, and you understand about
I, I understand. Uh, Zeb Hoffman, I guess on this ordinance fourteen deal, I understand that we're trying to do this kinda more for the section line rapid area kinda deal. Is there any way we can grandfather, like our roads in? I mean, we grandfather a lot of things in, just pick a date. I don't care if it's nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty, whatever, if this road has been at maintenance since nineteen eighty at full?
He brought
Making clear with the state's attorney's office, so grandfathering is not necessarily meant for roads. It's under our planning and zoning statutory authority. Um, typically you have to have a statute in order to do grandfathering, grandfathering falls under planning and zoning. This is road, as far as I'm aware, I haven't done specific research on it, but as far as I'm aware, there is no statute in the highway section that allows for grandfathering.
Okay, and, and again, I'll reiterate, when the road classification comes out, it's gonna come back to this commission. So I understand what you're saying, but this is the ordinance and you understand the direction we're trying to go.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand what, what is going on. Um, I guess I do have a few questions. Is, is, um, making it from minimum maintenance, like what we're trying to do here, is it a liability reason? Is that why we're trying to pipe, put up some minimum maintenance?
I guess, we had these discussions at the Megan.
On the ordinance.
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office, so the statutes that allow for minimum and no maintenance roads have specific exemptions for liability in a no maintenance road. Um, there is a specific statute that allows for there to be no liability on the county so long as the designation is done correctly and it is in fact passed correctly. Um, as far as minimum maintenance roads, we still have, uh, an obligation to maintain those roads to a certain level pursuant to state statute. Um, and I think as Lloyd has been trying to mention several times, none of this is happening yet, this is just changing the ordinance. Um, so at the point that the resolution actually comes in front of the board, I think would be the more appropriate time for everybody to be voicing their concerns.
Alright, so, we're just talking about the maintenance, or I mean, the wording, so it's gonna go from May to shall, correct?
And we've already got a motion on the floor to change that.
The will.
To will.
Yeah.
I apologize, to will.
Yeah, you probably forgot all the discussion we had, we already made a motion for the will and the snow removal to, and the mowing.
Okay, so we're gonna have another meeting, correct, on the minimum maintenance? How many more meetings do we have to have?
Well, that's when they do, do the study and they start designating road, the roads that way.
How many more studies, we've already had a couple of them, haven't we?
I'm just answering your questions, sir.
Chair. So, Zeb, what, what's today in front of you is um, full maintenance, minimum maintenance, and no maintenance on an ordinance fourteen, the whole ordinance.
Yes.
I understand why you guys came today because a lot of the ranchers and farmers are doing cattle and, and, and working on their cattle and they, they just wanted to voice their concern on the ordinance overall because of the changes on minimum maintenance, and they were the ones that did it. Okay, so we went to the meetings, it wasn't anybody else in the county, it was the Wall District that helped Joe um, determine some of the will on this, so they're here today. I know, uh, Lloyd, there's still the resolution and all that, they're here today to voice their opinion that they're the ones that got it changed to will. So you keep saying, we're having another meeting, I understand that. But they're here to say, we don't want the minimum maintenance, we don't want that. We want something that's gonna make a difference for our businesses, that's why they're here today. So, to say that, we're just talking about the ordinance, we're moving forward, I understand that. But they're frustrated with the minimum and they're thinking, most of them, when you read the letters, when you listen to the emails, when I get the texts, they think they're going to minimum maintenance in a bunch in their area. Um, Zeb, that's not happening right now. Um, and if there's anything we could do to move forward on this board, today is just the ordinance and that's why Lloyd keeps report, re- repeating that, but I understand why you guys came, because you're the ones that changed it and had our, or helped us change our minds, hopefully today, on, of the will, so. Um, again, you have a bunch of hot people and it's not just these guys that are farmers or ranchers that, um, are trying to tell us in a positive way, not a negative, that they need help, that these roads make a difference for them and, um, they need Joe's help on it to make sure that minimum doesn't go on their roads when they have ten trucks a day or twenty trucks. And they're right. I've listened to the ranchers and farmers and they have said, Debbie, before we, we used to haul, you know, we used to call people to come haul our trucks, now we have trucks. So of course, there's gonna be more maintenance on those roads because now they're buying the trucks. They're making more efficient businesses by buying the trucks and being able to take those farm-to-market roads, those trucks on there. That's why they're more traveled, that's why they're getting more beat up, but bottom line is, is they're asking us that because of these reasons, we just said it, it costs more money, it has more damage on the roads than, uh, than the cars do, that it's gonna make more damage and they, they need it not so much as the minimum, but the full.
Yeah.
So that's why they're here today, so they are talking on the ordinance, but they are also talking out the resolution that
Zeb, this is your turn.
Four times.
Uh, thank you Debbie, Debbie has, why we are here, we did not know this thing was gonna be to move the resolution at first to May to will. So that's why Chance and I came up here today to voice our opinion on the minimum and no maintenance deal. I understand that we are trying to do this, sometimes we can't get up here every meeting. So that's why Chance and I have dis- discussed why we want the minimum in no maintenance deal. I apologize, that, I understand that what you guys are trying to do, but we just wanted to voice our opinion a little bit before you did this whole deal, so thank you.
We respect that.
Thanks, Zeb.
So, great. Can you, somebody read off what the amended motion is? We added, we changed it to, uh,
So I think you would direct, Megan, help me out here, do you, do they need to just approve the amendment with the changes in the minimum maintenance from, do you have that ordinance in front of you? I don't.
Here, Joe. I think that's what it should be, you can tell me if I'm wrong.
Cause we made the motion to amend, to amend the snow removal and the mowing and the we and shall.
May to will.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what you guys can do is just, um, make the motion that those, um, maintenance duties are mandatory, not, um, I guess, you may do them as opposed to it's a shall or a will. Um, and then Joe and I will work on the language and we'll get it to make it, um, it a mandatory thing that must be done as opposed to a thing that may be done. Um, and we'll, we'll wordsmith the language, that way it's correct. Um, so it doesn't have to be particularly specific of what the language is gonna be, you can just make that motion that it's mandatory as opposed to permissive. Um, and we will make those changes. And then as far as the ordinance is concerned, I would just suggest that you make a second motion to continue um, the ordinance to a second rea- or a third reading, I suppose, would this be the third reading?
Yeah, this is the second meeting, so
Yeah, so a third reading, um, so that way, um, those changes may be made, yep.
Okay.
So what is the motion currently?
So, what she's recommending is that they make those changes to this ordinance with the will and ma- actually make it mandatory and bring this back to our next meeting. That's what the recommendation is.
Are you open the table?
On the minimum maintenance. Do we need a motion?
I think we probably do need to, well, no, that was a mo- to add it, you know, if she's talking about making it mandatory, we probably would have to table the previous motion.
Table or discard, right?
Table or discard, yeah. You think the wording is gonna be changed?
No, guys, Holly's shaking her head no, also, you just make a substitute motion is what you're gonna do.
Yeah, you don't wanna table a motion, cause it
Right.
Still be
Oh, okay.
Be in existence. You wanna substitute.
Get rid of it.
Okay, so basically, what you're telling us is we should have a substitute motion put on the floor to continue to the next meeting, which would make it a second meeting with the changes.
Yep.
Okay. That's what the staff's recommend-
Take her in a second, it could withdraw the motion.
No, that was just to add it or change it, I think the substitute motion will take care of that.
I have a substitute. Basically to bring the ordinance fourteen standard to the next meeting with the changes on the minimum maintenance road, um, area.
Take it.
Amendment on the, I should say, the amendment on the minimum maintenance road, um, designation.
Are you okay with?
I can go back and look at the recording and we'll just
Right.
Okay.
I think I understand what
You understand, and, and you're understanding it's not, just that the changes on that minimum, okay.
Yes, that it's
Rest of the commission's okay with that? Okay, we have motion by Hickok and seconded by Mister Lassiter. Need further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay.
Well, we're losing a commissioner, let's take a ten, I'd look for a motion, take a ten-minute break.
So moved.
Moved by Lassiter. Seconded by McCroy, take a ten-minute break, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're ready to come back into session. Next on our agenda is item eighteen and it's aimed from Compensation Committee. And I'll recognize HR Director Carol Bancroft, and this is action on dependent care FSA.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Bancroft, Pennington County HR Director, that as we presented in the, the previous meeting, that the Compensation Committee and the Healthcare Trust Board are jointly seeking approval for implementing a really positive change for our employees that they have been requesting we would help them with, which is a Pennington County Dependent Care Flexible Spending Account. And it would be through Wellmark's partnership with Health Equity. So, since we met last time, I have some updated information for you, which is all very positive, that the original, um, recommendation, that there was a calculation that we felt as far as what the best case estimate would be. And so that would be as far as the monthly service fee of four dollars and seventy-five cents per enrolled employee. Then in talking more with Health Equity and understanding their experience database that they said based on eight hundred employees, that we could anticipate it be about fifty people would enroll. So, that amount would equate to, on an annual basis, about two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So that's significantly less than what we had initially talked about. And I'm, I'm very pleased to tell you that our auditor, Cindy Muller, that she met with Health Equity as well, and they did have a requirement where it was a ten percent pre-fund balance that you needed to maintain for, uh, each of the annual enrollments. And so that, that ten percent has been waived, that we do not have to be concerned about that, so. The ask as far as approval for monies from the general fund is for the monthly service fee, which again is about two thousand eight hundred and fifty on an annual basis. So, the agreement that they presented to us, that we had our state's attorney office, that Jay was the one that, um, reviewed it and has some recommendations as far as what we would make some changes to it. And so you have the, the handout there as far as what those changes are, but I'll just walk them through real quick. That on page one, in the first paragraph, that they had, um, a less than succinct address. So in order to make sure that any of the mailings that are coming to us as far as required notices that are under Article Five, um, Section Five dot one, that we need to make sure that that is a sufficient address. make sure that that is a sufficient address. So, um, ask them to put the auditor's office, and that would be in Suite Two Thirty, that they would add that to the, the address. The second change is on page two, and that is to change from, uh, twenty-one days after the billing date to thirty days. And then also, in that paragraph, it talks about that we would be responsible for sales tax, but changing that, that we are a tax-exempt organization. So, those are the two changes in that paragraph on page two. And then if you'll turn to page five, that under Section Five dot O three indemnification, that in that first sentence, it says Wellmark agrees to indemnify and hold client harmless, that we want them to insert officers, agents, and employees into that as well. And then, uh, the last sentence in that first paragraph, however, this indemnification provision shall not apply to any claims, liabilities, losses, damages, or expenses caused by any action or failure to act by the client or its agents, servants, or employees, that Jay is recommending that they would also add that sentence to the, the end of the second paragraph, and that's actually in favor of Health Equity. So, being good partners with them. And then, uh, lastly, then on the, the very last page, at the very bottom of the document, to add the auditor's signature block in addition to having the, the chair signature block. So, the actual content of the agreement is a, a legal contract, and these revisions are our preferences. It does not, you know, a worst-case scenario would not alter as far as what the agreement would be with them, it's just our preferences being added. So, we are seeking approval of, um, having this particular benefit put into place and signing the agreement with the master services agreement when we get the information back from their legal team, which it, it is with their legal team right now, they just didn't have the time to bring and present today. So, the motion could read that I move to approve entering into agreement with Wellmark for Health Equity dependent care FSA benefit with the cost of the monthly service fee to be appropriated through the general fund and make that effective January one of 2024. And by approving this, that, uh, that would enable us during open enrollment to talk to the dependent FSA, that that is something that our employees could consider as one of their benefits.
I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Drews and seconded by Lassiter, and that incorporates the changes that you outlined, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, just wanted to be clear on that. Is there any further questions for Carol? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B.
So, item B is approval of Policy Four dot Two for holidays, and this is to, uh, change and remove the definition of essential employees, because we do have some of our non-exempt employees that are required to work on holidays, and we felt that there was a disparity if we did not include them in the time-and-a-half pay. And so, it's just removing the language that it's a requirement to have the essential employees only that qualify for the time-and-a-half.
And your recommended motion for that would be?
So, the motion could be that I move to approve the recommended revisions to Policy Four dot Two holidays to clarify holiday compensation eligibility for non-exempt employees and consistency in language with other policies effective immediately.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Lassiter. Is there any public comment? Any discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. So, the next item is approval of Policy Four dot Seven for the workers' compensation insurance. So, the revisions to this are to add specific language from the South Dakota qualified laws to, um, as well as the South Dakota Department of Labor to provide guidance to employees on handling the worker compensation claims. It also, um, enhances the policy to include as far as what is the procedure and how it would be handled as far as any of their accrued benefit time in, um, payment with the workers' compensation payment.
Is there any questions for Carol?
No approval.
Second.
Did you wanna read that in for me, Carol?
I'd be happy to. So, I move to approve the recommended revisions to Policy Four dot Seven, workers' compensation insurance to included specific guidance on handling and reimbursing worker compensation claims.
So, we have a motion by Hickok and the seconded by Mr. Lassiter. Any further discussions? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Trying to say two things at once. Next, we've come to items from Commission Manager Holly Hennies, and this is the 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting dates.
Yes, the first item in front of you today, commissioners, is to approve the 2024 Board of Commission meeting dates as presented. Um, I want to bring special attention to four different dates that are on your schedule. The first one being Monday, June tenth at one P M. This is a special meeting to canvass the election results of the primary election. Um, as you all are aware, there's been several changes made to the election laws, and now with, uh, post-election audit being required, there's some additional requirements that they have to, um, complete. So, this meeting, we're gonna estimate three to four hours, but we're being optimistic. So, that one is on a Monday, and there are six days to complete that canvas once the follow, once the election has been, um, performed, so that why, that's why it's set on Monday at one o'clock after Planning Commission. Um, then, I'm bringing your attention to the 2025 budget hearings. Um, I've got that set for Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, and Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. And the reason that's moved is because the previous Wednesday is June nineteenth, which is now a federal holiday, so it breaks our schedule a little bit. And then the fourth date would be Saturday, November ninth. This is also a canvas meeting to complete the canvas for the general election, and the reason that is on a Saturday is because Monday is Veterans Day, also a closed holiday, and our facility is closed on Fridays. So, we felt we would have less challenges to just schedule it on a Saturday morning.
A Saturday, okay. Is there any questions for Holly on these dates? You've even included some of the planning workshop ones and gotten through all those. Okay.
Correct, we have scheduled those in January, on Wednesday, January thirty-first, and July, Wednesday, July thirty-first.
There's no questions, I take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to approve the 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Lassiter. Any public comment? Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, the next item in front of you, commissioners, is simply a pub- uh, an update to a policy and procedure in the speaker request form that the Board of Commissioners uses. Um, this is simply to bring it in alignment with what statute, direct language from statute and clean up inconsistent word choices.
Is there any questions for Holly on this?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I just have one, cause whenever I was reading through it, and it's on the first page, item number seven, it says supporting documentation, including presentation materials, documents accepted through Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Publisher, JPG. File sizes must be less than twelve megabytes in total. What happens if they have a full presentation that's obviously greater than twelve megabytes? Can they send it in?
We ask them to bring it in on a flash drive.
Okay, they, okay.
The twelve megabyte is our email limit, and I actually think it's fifteen, but, um, we ask them to put it on a flash drive.
That's if they're just emailing it in. It has nothing to do with if it's, um, if they've got more than that, i- it's not that it can't be presented, it just has to be brought in.
How they bring it.
That way it doesn't get bounced. Gotcha.
Any further questions? Any public comment on those? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the updated public comment policy and procedure in speaker request form as presented.
We'll move.
Moved by, moved by Drews, seconded by Hickok. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Uh, the third item is to update our public agenda item submission policy and procedure, same thing, just to update the language. This one hasn't been done since 2014, um, so we just wanted to update it as to what we actually do.
Is there any questions for Holly on the update on the public agenda submission policy and procedure?
Mr. Chair, just a comment, I appreciate what you're doing, Holly. Looks like there's a lot of work involved in this, and this thing goes back to 2014, so it definitely needed updated.
Yep.
Any further questions or questions?
I'll make it as a motion if it hasn't been done.
Mr., there's a, Drews, move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin, to approve the updated public agenda item submission policy and procedure as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And finally, the fourth item is to request spending authority to host a educational legislative forum. Um, we would like to host on November third, which would be a Friday, the Black Hills Area legislators in regards to the summer study and the items that that group has chosen to move forward, and to be able to educate them on what Pennington County's needs, um, are going to be. So, my request... Excuse me.
Ms. Hickok.
So, don't you have county meetings on all western South Dakota where you could hold this forum for everybody that has issues, instead of just Pennington County and spending eight hundred dollars?
We do have, um, area, Black Hills area district meetings, however, haven't been well-attended, legislators don't necessarily go to all of them, and that's more for broader topics, and we felt by focusing on the county summer study, um, would be more beneficial.
Okay, thank you, Holly. And then, um, I guess that's, that's why I asked you the question. Um, and how many usually attend and will attend something like this? Um, I guess even if there's a few, it's worth it, so just wanna know the question why it wasn't about there.
We, we would like to focus strictly on the legislators themselves and be able to educate them as to what county responsibilities are, what we are spending taxpayer dollars on. Um, we've got a group of leadership set to speak to them on their areas of responsibility, and providing the luncheon is just, in my opinion, a respectful thing to do, and we're asking them to spend two hours with us.
And who's gonna be hosting this? I mean, are we hel- holding it by commissioners are doing this, or who are?
Me, Pennington County would host, yes.
Okay, and who's, who's like running the meeting and doing the, I mean, I guess what's, what's the forum?
My, my hope would be for the chair to give a welcome, and then Gary to be able to be the moderator as our, um, legislative liaison for the county, and have a, an agenda basically set of, of the different speakers on the different topics in regards to the summer study.
I appreciate that, and, and it's not something they can do, um, themselves without having to have a forum and spend eight hundred dollars.
We could certainly send them the information, I just believe that personal interaction gives us better ability to share that information and to be able to have those conversations directly. Um, I think a lot of the legislators don't really realize how much the counties are responsible for, and, and the cost and the taxpayer dollars that come with that. So, it's, it's all about educating them as to what our responsibilities are.
And, and I appreciate that, because, um, what happens is, uh, the people that are interested would already have contacted us, I believe, if they're interested in the changes, or if we sent them something to see how many people are actually gonna attend, cause I'm learning that maybe a couple people in the legislature show up, three or four, and then the rest, um, have to have interest in it. So, um, my point is, have we contacted these people ahead of time, instead of having a open public forum meeting on something that we don't even know how many will attend in, in Pennington County, and even care to know our wishes, without sounding mean?
No, I would definitely send them an invitation, um, and get feedback right away. I can tell you from the Rapid City legislative one that they had, I believe there was thirteen or fourteen, um, legislators in attendance at that meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago now.
And where was that at?
It was very well re- um, the city hosted one.
Okay, and they talked about the summer study as well?
No, no. They talked about city needs.
Okay, I guess there's, there's other outlets, and I guess I'd like to see how much interest is in before we spend the eight hundred dollars, but...
Mr. Chair.
That'd be my opinion.
Mr. Drews.
Well, this, I think this is a, a great idea, cause it gives us an opportunity, uh, for our department heads to, uh, appear, if they so choose, and, uh, uh, Holly has worked with, uh, a number of those, including the court system, that have agreed to appear before this to, uh, explain the needs that, uh, that we have coming up, and, uh, guarantee you, this is a lot cheaper than trying to send everybody to peer, uh, to do this. So, uh, I would certainly support this effort and believe it's a, a good move on our part.
And I truly think it's not going to be the eight hundred dollars. That was me estimating it a little bit high. I'm, I'm in the six hundred dollar range, to be honest with you. We were gonna hold it here, so that we don't have any room rental facility costs or anything like that, um, and just have a lunch catered.
You're doing a positive by what you're trying to do, I understand that, and I mean that, um, and it's not the money, it's, are they gonna show up? And if, I know it's cheaper than going to peer, but they're either listening to you or they're not, whether you're in peer or not, and they're listening to what our needs are. So, those people wanna contact you, those people wanna make a difference for Pennington County, um, and they will show up. Those will be the same people in peer that vote the same way. So, um, yes, I appreciate that the department heads, um, a lot of them cover through peer without us, um, so, um, they can voice their opinion here as well, but I think our department heads do a wonderful job. In fact, most of the time, I don't even know half of them what they're doing till later, until it comes up, which I think is amazing, and they've got stuff already done before we even know about it. So, they do amazing job. So, um, it doesn't just need to be for department heads, they've got it covered, so, thank you, Holly.
I, I will say on this, I, I think this is important, and this was the second option. Uh, we, we normally try to partner with the city with this, like with the legislative breakfast and so forth, at this, but this happened just at the same time that a new mayor took over, and he had a different direction of where he was going with, with, uh, his elective official meeting, and so we didn't have the chance or the opportunity to, to support this. I think this is a special year, you know, with that summer study on, on the county, it's very important that we try to draw them on, in as much as possible. If this was a regular year, absolutely, we would be doing what we normally do, getting out there and meeting with them one-on-one, but I think with the needs that we need, trying to get them in here and express them one-on-one is very important. And it's not, I'm thinking in the future, we are gonna try and get back with the, the joint, uh, meetings with the city after this, but I think this, this does give the opportunity for Barry to come in and express his concerns with the, um, veteran officers again, and some other needs that we have going on, but I think it's the opportunity, and I think I have faith it'll come in a lot cheaper than the eight hundred also. Is there any other questions for Holly?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Had moved to authorize spending authority up to eight hundred dollars from the Commission Office budget to host an educational forum for 2024 legislative purposes.
Second.
It's been moved by Drews and seconded by Roskin. Is there any further comments? Any public comment?
Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
I'll be saying no, I just think there's other outlets. Um, I believe that Holly's been efficient, and our, um, departments have been efficient at doing what they're supposed to do for this, and that the people that, uh, again, wanna know, um, do know, and the ones that don't, I think, um, you're just gonna be putting it out there for the same people that are already in favor of it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one note.
Thank you.
Now, this brings us to items from the public. I have no speaker request forms, but I will read what the requests is, that is required. Speaker request forms and public comment time is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting the county government and its functions. Action will not be taken during this time on any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item... Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by the name and area of the interest. As I said, I have no public comment forms. So with that, do we need to take a short break to set up, or are you ready to move forward? Okay, we'll move forward. We're going to move to the board of adjustments. And I'll read this again. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on any item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to the commission manager, Holly Hennies, located to the lower right side of the dials. So I would look to the board to go into the board of adjustments.
So move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hagcock to go into the board of adjustments. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Brittany. Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Molitor, planning director. Item 21A is appeal of the planning director's decision by Jeff and Mary Mars. TJ Watanowitz is the agent. They had requested to submit a variance to section 204F, which does not allow a dead-end road system to exceed 40 dwelling units in two miles in cumulative length, according to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The applicant's agent, KTM Design Solutions, attempted to submit an application for a variance to allow additional dwelling units on a dead-end road system. The request is needed in order for the applicant to plat an additional 10 lots on an existing dead-end road system. That plating is through the city of Rapid City. Staff did not accept the application for the following reasons. There is no hardship as defined in section 509, which is our variance section of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The portion of Countryside Boulevard that must be improved as part of this request is on this Rapid City's major street plan as a collector and connects to Dunsmore Road to the east. I can put that up here. At that time, the proposed plan did not show a turnaround or cul-de-sac at the terminus of Countryside Boulevard. Since then, they have submitted that information. And currently, there are already over 100 dwelling units on the dead-end road system. The applicant's property is zoned suburban residential. The northeast and west properties are also zoned suburban residential. Staff met with the applicant on September 27th to discuss the variance process, and staff had indicated that they would not take in the application because it did not meet the requirements of our zoning ordinance. So staff recommends to deny the request to direct the planning department to take the variance due to no special condition existing that would prevent the use and enjoyment of the property.
Is there any questions from Brittany from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Hey, could you go to Rapid Map and zoom in on this? I think the Mars owned 40 acres, and it's part of that 40 acres. And when I zoomed in on it, it looked like there was two. I wanted to see the current access. I think the current access is off countryside.
Right, so here's.
And then to the east, there's another access. Well, there's no access there, but it looks like a 66-foot piece of property owned by the adjacent neighbor. But I'm trying to figure out if the limit's 40, how can we get to 100?
That'd be.
Well, if this was plotted, and I'd have to go back to the older plats, our subdivision regulations, when that requirement went into place, our subdivision regulations were implemented in 2008 and 2013. So I believe that this subdivision was plotted prior to that.
That's correct.
Chair.
Hold on, I got.
Can you pull that up?
This area right here?
Yeah, where this proposed subdivision would go.
It's right here.
Can you zoom in a little bit so we can?
Yep, let me get the aerial.
And then put the aerial on.
It would be in this.
So the current access comes in on the west, right?
Mm-hmm. And this is Countryside Boulevard.
Access from Dunsmore or to the, if I'm right, that's not the, if we could get across that 66-foot, we'd have another source of access, is that?
This is 50 feet right here.
Right. That's the part that I was wondering. So if they could hypothetically get across that 60-foot of private property, then they'd have two sources of access, then that 40-unit rule wouldn't apply?
Correct.
Okay.
I got Blaster for you. You done?
Yeah.
Mr. Blaster.
Well, that was going to be part of my discussion is about getting right across. If they can connect to Dunsmore, then ultimately it makes it possible for them to move forward, and the planning and zoning would support that, is that correct?
That is correct, and part of the reasoning too is because this is on the city's major street plan as connecting. So when we looked at that future development, this is part of the collector.
Mr. Chair, follow-up. So what's preventing the connection through there?
This is a private, this portion, this 50 feet is private.
It's 100% private?
It's a flagpole lot that goes to the south to this residence.
Can you click on that, identify that property of Donheiser's? There is a 66-foot corridor that runs up there.
So we did some research on the plat, and it looks like when they platted this, they left this as an unplatted balance for whatever reason.
Wouldn't have to improve it.
Somewhat awkward, but instead of plating this lot to that, they stopped the right-of-way here and left this portion as an unplanted type balance.
Do you have any more questions, Travis?
No, I'm fine for now.
Ms. Hagcock.
So the city also has a 40-unit rule, and they've let them build over that 40-unit, if I'm correct?
They have with allowing them to have fire sprinklers. However, it is of our state's attorney's opinion that under 1110-5 and 1110-12, that is not allowed to require sprinkler systems as part of them.
It's a safety factor, so I would hope they do it. Number two, they've, when's the last time they plotted another lot out there?
It's been a while.
Okay. For me, we are just rezoning it into an area that's already been plotted, and it looks like it has sufficient water, sewer, and the infrastructure doesn't have the second access. But like you said, there's areas where people can still access to get out of that area. So I'm in favor of approving this.
Is there any further questions for Brittany before I go to the agent? Do have a speaker request form. Normally, the agents or the applicants don't have to fill out a speaker request form, but that's great that you did. TJ, I'm not going to try and pronounce your last name. Just recognize yourself for the record.
TJ Watanowitz. I represent Jeff and Mary Mars on this property. We've got buyer that it's contingent on being able to develop these lots in order to purchase. We did meet with everybody, and the county's been very helpful. I'm not super aware of the process, but we do have Renee and Jeremy with KTM here to answer any specific engineering questions as well. We would be putting in the covenants and on the plat that they would be required to do fire suppression systems in these homes. They would be far better off than 100 homes, 103 houses that have already been approved in this specific development, only having one access. We'd be making it better because at least there would be fire safety. Ms. Donheiser will not sell us the 50 feet. She won't, and she won't have anything to do with it. She does not want anybody going through there. I believe the county a long time ago probably should have condemned that section. It's a 50-foot strip, I don't know how that works either. We've approached her about, you know, just doing life safety, putting emergency exit only. It's a no, it's a no. Currently, there is a fire hydrant there. Black Hills Energy has their utility easement through there, and there's an eight-inch major water line system that runs through there, through Colonial Pines. That all runs through that, down that strip as well. And then the neighbor has just built a big garage on the north half of that property too, that you can see on there. So we did add the secondary cul-de-sac down there. It would be a fire truck turnaround cul-de-sac. We would do the fire suppression system in the homes. But unfortunately, Donheiser is not willing to do that 50 feet. She believes that this will really increase traffic. If you look at Dunsmore, it's not improved all the way to this lot already. It looks more like a driveway. And I don't think anybody would actually be going out there unless there was some fire life safety event that they had to get out. And if they wanted to, they could jump the curb on the cul-de-sac or just drive through her land anyways to get out. And I think that's really all I have, but I am here for questions, and Renee and Jeremy with KTM are here as well.
Is there any questions from the commission for TJ?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Blaster.
Just out of curiosity, in your development plan, I kind of looked at it, but I just want to make sure, in the current plan, do you have the road that kind of just butts up to it and just kind of deadens on that? Just in case in the future, something happens and y'all can actually make a full road across that?
We would love for it to go through. We had to do a second cul-de-sac bulb right there, which I do have a copy of as well, if you guys have not seen it. Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, so we created that second cul-de-sac at the end where it would connect to Dunsmore. We're all about it going through, we'd love to improve it. Without Donheiser's permission, it is a private piece of land right now. We've really looked into it. Actually, there was a right-of-way that the bank owned back in the 80s, and that was a right-of-way through Dunsmore. And then her and Donheiser abolished that right-of-way for some reason back in the late 80s.
So, Mr. Chair, so I guess my, with this is you're putting a cul-de-sac that in the future, if something happens, you can literally just connect this road to Dunsmore and allow traffic to go through later on in the future?
Straight through, and we hope that does happen as well.
Okay.
So Brittany, it sounds to me that there, when this was first presented, we didn't know about the cul-de-sacs and so forth, or you guys didn't. Have you added to our agenda at the last, towards the end?
Right, we still wouldn't support it just because it's over the 40-unit rule. There's so many lots already. And like I said before, the sprinkler systems and the opinion of our state's attorney's office, there's two statutes that say that you cannot require those in a single-family residence. There's no way for us to enforce that in the building permit process to make them do that. They, the city requires covenant agreements for that, but we're not part of that agreement, and so we can't enforce that when they come in for the building permits.
That's why they did the covenant agreements, because it was part of the city.
Right, but the agreement is with the city, so the building permits are with us. So we still can't enforce those unless we're party to that agreement. And my understanding is the state's attorney would not agree to you guys signing to be part of that because it's against statutory requirements.
Understand. Is there any further questions from the commission?
No, I'd move approval.
Second.
There's a move, there's a motion for approval from Hagcock and a second from Ross Connect. Is there any further discussion or comments? Any public comments, Mr. TJ?
TJ Watanowitz. So we would put this fire suppression agreement in the covenants for Falcon Crest, and covenants are to be abided by by the people who own those lands. And we would actually write it on the plat as well in the Mylar that's filed. I understand that the county's not going to recognize this form, but obviously, we still have to go through the city after we get through the county as part of the three-mile district, something or other. So we would have that on there. And we would be involved with selling these lots as well to potential builders. And I think the other thing is, you know, the tax, the taxes that would come up from these, you know, eight, nine million dollar houses would be great for the county as well, as we talked about fixing these roads and stuff for an hour and a half, so.
Yeah. TJ, we're moving forward on approval, just so you know that.
Mr. Chair.
Haven't voted on it yet.
That's the motion on the floor. Mr. Ross.
I'm just hoping that someday Dunsmore Road can be extended to the west and tie into Countryside. Nothing lasts forever, so that change of ownership, the change of heart, I, just the way that aligns right now, it just seems like that's what it was meant to be in the first place.
I agree.
The staff is doing their job. This requires a two-thirds vote, so I'll do roll call. Any further discussion before I go to a roll call?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Hagcock?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Lucroy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
So I'd look for a motion to close board of adjustment. Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Blaster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Right, the board of commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item B is major plan unit development amendment review PU 19-06 for Rockville Gold Town LLC. Pat Hall is the owner. To review an amendment to an existing plan unit development to allow for townhomes, apartments, and commercial businesses. And the planning commission recommend to continue the review of PU 1906 to the November 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Anybody from the public wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any commissioner who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we come to our regular agenda items. And the following planning and zoning matters in uncontested hearings are those of which the planning department has not yet received or provided comment contesting the item. The documents for each item have been reviewed by the commissioners, and decisions during these hearings will be made based on information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If received comments contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. I'll recognize Jason, item C.
Morning commissioners, Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Next two agenda items are the same. I don't know if you'd like to discuss those at the same time or if you want to take them up separately.
Would the commission approve waiving the rules to take up items C and D at both the same time but vote on them separately?
I would recommend that, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Hagcock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
All right, so agenda item C is comprehensive plan amendment CA 23-09, and agenda item D is rezone, RZ 23-13, to change future land use from agriculture district to suburban residential district and to change current zoning from agriculture to suburban residential district. The applicant is James Schambler. He is in the audience if you have any questions for him. Location of the property is along Cortez Lane. It is one acre in lot size. Currently zoned agriculture district, it is vacant. Access is off Cortez Lane, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Based on their recommendations, staff does look at Pennington County zoning designation comparison, which is on the screen. We also do look at current zoning within one-half mile of the subject property, also on the screen, and future land use in the same. Staff also does look at current infrastructure in the area, roads and streets. Cortez Lane is 66-foot wide, planted right-of-way. It is currently 18 feet of gravel. Infrastructure is private water and private onsite wastewater treatment system. Some history on the property is that it was plotted through the city of Boxelller with a note that they do get the rezone and comprehensive plan amendment taken care of. That was never done. Public water and sewer are not available to the property, and the roads do not meet current ordinance 14 standards. So with that, staff recommends denial of comprehensive plan amendment 23-09 and rezone 23-13 as the roads' infrastructure do not support further suburban residential development.
Second.
So there was a motion to approve comprehensive plan amendment CA 2309 from Hagcock, seconded by Ross Connect. Any further questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Now would be item D that we also took up at the same time. That would be, what's your recommendation on that one?
Also denial.
Also for denial? Is there another motion to approve rezone, RZ 23-13?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross. Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That takes care of items C and D, contested hearings. Item E.
Agenda item E is Plan Unit Development Overlay 23-06 to allow a recreational resort. The applicant is Horse Creek LLC. The agent is Garrett Kickenbecker. Location of the property is 23570 Highway 385. It does consist of eighteen point zero seven acres, currently zoned commercial district. Existing use is a campground. There is special flood hazard area on the property. If you recall, this item was continued from the September 19th board meeting. The original recommendation to the Planning Commission that they approved was to continue this indefinitely. It seemed like this was going on for months at a time, so the applicant has made some pretty significant strides forward in the past week. So on Tuesday, he did provide flood plan permits to our office to expand the drain fields in two different areas, and last Thursday, Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources did approve those extensions. So considering the progress, staff would like to change the proposed recommendation that's in your packet. With that, staff recommends to continue Plan Unit Development Overlay 23-06 to the November 7th Board of Commission meeting to request final approval.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Hickock to continue to the November 7th Board of Commission meeting. Any public comment? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, Vacation of Plat VP 2304.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Molitor again. Item F is the Vacation of Plat VP 23-04 is for Pennington County Highway to vacate a portion of the platted public right-of-way of Knox Street. This was originally platted to be Knox Street, but eventually Haven Street is what was actually constructed and is utilized right now. Knox Street currently, or what the portion of right-of-way right now is, there's the old Hawthorne ditch, and there's some other utility easements in that. So this is basically a cleanup of this right-of-way for the school to eventually purchase this portion of right-of-way. There were some concerns during the Planning Commission meeting about the driveway that's located on that property to the west. Joe Miller, the highway superintendent, is here to speak to that. I did speak to him about that. They are going to work with Rentor and Associates to get an easement for that driveway.
I think it's afternoon now, and I don't know what time it is. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. So yeah, there are some concerns, and we initially remembered them when we were going through this, but failed to actually create an easement for the lots A and B. That's actually just one lot now. Lot A and B of Lot 35 are just one lot currently. He's got a horseshoe type driveway that we're going to create an easement out to Haven Street, and the school district has actually already purchased the property. So once we get this vacated, it'll go to the school district for their utilization. So Sean reached out to Eric with Rentor Associates, and the easement is in the works. We just haven't got it yet, so.
And the school's understanding of what we need to do?
Correct. Yeah, the school's signed off on everything. This is literally the last piece of the puzzle. So once we get this vacated, we can wash our hands of it, so.
Thanks, Joe. Any further questions for staff?
And Planning Commission did recommend approval with one condition.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve Vacation of Plat VP 2304 with one condition.
So I'll move.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Drews. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brings us to item G.
Item G is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA 23-01 for Pennington County. It's to amend Section 319 of the Vacation Home Rental section of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This was heard at the October, I think, 4th Board of Commissioners meeting. So this, there were a few minor changes, and you can see those ones in pink from the last Board of Commissioners meeting.
Brittany, I do have one speaker's request form. Did you want to go over some more before I get the speaker request?
Um, no, not at this time unless the board has.
I'll do the speaker request, so then the board can take it up, if they have any more questions for you. I do have a speaker request form from Melanie Palm. Thanks for your patience, Melanie.
Of course. Thank you for what you're doing. It was a great educational experience for me, and I just want to take the opportunity to express gratitude for all you do. I'm grateful. So I just want to appreciate and acknowledge all of the people that have come together to come up with ideally the best situation for all involved. And I appreciate everybody's willingness to listen and come together on this, and we have been attempting to do the right thing in this regard as well, and we appreciate the opportunity to link elbows with you on that. So particularly, I'm grateful for the clarification in pink that helped, helped us understand the direction that you're wanting to go. So I don't mean to waste your time. I guess I'm here to express gratitude. So thank you kindly.
Melanie, did you, were you on the committee, or you just read the agenda?
No, I've just been listening, learning about the process, how county government works. It's been fascinating, so.
Well, thank you for coming, and thanks for your participation.
Thank you.
At this time, we have the ordinance that's in front of us from, with the changes that were directed from our last meeting. I guess I'd go, is there any questions for staff at this time?
Chair.
Ms. Hickock.
So Brittany, just a question. On multifamily apartments, VHRs are prohibited in units located in apartments, condominiums, or other multifamily dwellings over the country and across the country. That's not the case a lot of times. It makes affordable, kind of like the AD use accessory dwellings, to make people be able to make more money on their properties in a certain sense, just kind of rent out rooms and stuff, which I'm not opposed to. Number two, the recreational vehicles, that also is it, I mean, there's some huge recreational vehicles that are pretty nice that people use for vacation home rentals, so I'm not opposed to that either. Just, I guess wasn't understanding some of that. The exception on plan unit developments, no cap on those. I guess I didn't get the difference of effective vacation homes or affected vacation homes, whether it's in a PUD or it's a VHR. So that seems kind of conducive to, I'm saying, we were capping vacation home rentals as VHRs, but we're not capping them as, if they're in PUDs, as vacation home rentals or, or commercial districts or highway service districts. So it's not making sense for me to cap something and do something to one group, but not the other. So again, on some of these rules and regulations, I think they're overregulated. Government's overregulating on some of this, and it's being fair to one side and not the other as well. So again, I would be saying no on the ordinance at this time, just because I think it's overregulated.
Thank you, Deb. And I will make note, just so everybody knows, that me as Lloyd LaCroy, I do own some investment properties, and I do have one vacation home rental that is jointly owned by me and my wife, and that I use the shop on. So, but I do have the permit for that, so I just wanted to disclose that for the public. I don't feel I have any conflict of interest on it, but unless the commission feels I do.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Brittany, on lots less than one acre, any structure located in a lot less than one acre in size must obtain a conditional use permit. Can you tell us what you'll be looking for in a conditional use permit if the applicant's lot is less than one acre?
So those were discussed at length, because previously, we did not allow them. I guess some of the things that would be considered by the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission would ultimately make the decision, would probably be, you know, how close they are to neighboring properties, their utilities, their water and sewer, their septic system, if they're public, things like that, topography. So those would be some of them.
Basically, this would give someone the opportunity, if they have less than one acre, to proceed with the vacation home rental if they, if all the criteria was warranted and justification.
Correct. It was spoke about at length during the Planning Commission meeting and during the committee meeting, and I think they came up with this compromise as a way to look at them on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Lester.
Mr. Chair. Brittany, looking at this, after the iterations that have gone through, I understand the committee spent a lot of time going through this, but I do kind of have heartache with the regulation over, I mean, what is the intent of this ordinance? Is it to bring individuals who are operating under the radar, if you will, into compliance? Or is it to really make individuals that are operating under the radar try to figure out how not to get under y'all's radar so that a thumb's getting put onto them? I get, that's my question, that whenever I read this, there's so many things that if we as a county enact this, now all of a sudden, somebody who's operating under the radar illegally, you think they're going to want to come and get underneath this ordinance?
So the goal of the committee was to bring more people into compliance. The SPU process is actually a simpler process. It's an administrative process, so it does not require public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. It just requires notice to abutting property owners. So, and it's a quicker process, because it's done internally, administratively in our office. So if you meet all of the checkboxes, you get your special permitted use permit, and then you just have to license, re-up your license every two years.
Right.
So essentially, that was the compromise with the committee, because they wanted, they thought that this would be a simpler process to bring more people into compliance.
I understand it may be a simpler process, but is it more onerous on the property owners? I mean, from what I read on this, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of stuff that's out there that will not qualify to be VHR moving forward.
So a lot of the checkboxes are already currently in our ordinance under 319. You know, their utility information, their local contact information, sales tax, things like that are already the requirements. And in most cases, even the ones that do apply for the conditional use permits, meet those requirements pretty regularly. The one, I would say that the one acre minimum has been the biggest hurdle for most people to meet the requirements.
Okay.
Is there any other comments before I speak? I think, you know, I've expressed myself fairly well about some of my thoughts with vacation home rentals, you know, I think, and you've made some of the changes. I think, quite frankly, it's going to be a way to, you know, I know it's labeled vacation home rentals, and people want to slap a label on it that it's outside, all outside people coming in. I think, quite frankly, the way things are going, housing prices, the way they are, it's going to take the creative in order to be a homeowner in the future for the average person, whether it's having parents live on the property or renting out one part of the property and living on the other, just like a duplex, something along those lines. But, you know, I brought up what, that I am an owner too, but I also, some of the information I looked at this weekend, this weekend, I looked at a property in Spearfish. I was thinking I could sell mine. We had a shop like I wanted, and it was a vacation home rental. It's been losing, I got the financials, it's losing money for four years. Owners weren't, aren't present, that type of thing. Mine hasn't, I'd be lucky about breaking even by the time of what I put into it, but I'm putting into it because I know I'm going to be there. But I bring that up because the company that I use to do my booking sent me something this morning on what, what's happening out in the market. Eighteen percent, there's been, there's eighteen percent more available VR BOs than there is for people to fill them. And what I mean by that is, maybe that's just a little bit too much, I got the two numbers mixed up, but I think that the markets come, and I've seen it, the market's getting to the point to where, you know, when I really did, when I did my property, I said, I need two-twenty a night for ninety day, or for ninety, a hundred and twenty days to make the payments and maintenance and upkeep. It's not that now, it's down to a hundred and forty-five. They adjust to what the market is, to what they're renting. So the market's going down is what, is what I'm seeing, and what they're telling me, is I think the market peaked, and I think these outside investors, that's which was a lot of what people were worried about, can't afford it anymore by the time they get maintenance fees and all that other stuff. But going back to what I do, and what I think a lot of people in our community do, they, from East River to here, that they want a property, they just want to be able to keep it up and so forth, is, is the main goal. I think if you get so many regulations, it becomes dangerous for the average homeowner that wants to purchase a property in our community. I think at this point in time, I'm just kind of, I'm like this. I probably want to review this a little bit more, but I also wanted to get out there to the community that, you know, I do have long-term rentals, and I do have one vacation rental with plans of living there at some point, but I wanted to make sure that was known to the public before this comes out. Because I do have a little bit of information on it. I've been doing it for two or three years now, and I still spend time out there, but I wanted to make that point. So I'm struggling with, you made the changes that the commission had set forth at the last meeting, which I greatly appreciate. I mean, I think those are some big strides, but now I'm really considering, after seeing what I was seeing this morning and some of what, the way the market's going, aren't we really doing too much? The market rates itself, we look at it as protection, and that we're trying to protect the public and so forth, and even when we talked about insurance, you know, one of the best protections a person has that rents a property is they rate the property after it's done. If you've got three, two, one, and bad reports, they're regulating you right there, just saying. You know, that's part of the regulation of, when we, when we talk about the upkeep of the property. So I'm always tended to continue for another two weeks, just to review and probably get some more of that market.
Thank you. And Chair, can I speak to that?
Go ahead.
I also agree it's market-driven. Most businesses are market-driven. You're either driven out of business because you're not doing the right things, and there's too many of them. Overregulation does not bring, Travis is right, more people in. They go more under the radar. They don't even like what we have now, and they're under the radar. So we just added more to it and said, this is to bring people, more people in, and it's not. We don't have the capabilities in Pennington County to do those inspections and different things of the VHRs, so that also is, is not compliant for us to be able to do that. So to say we need to add more regulations to something we can't already take care of right now. So the best thing, and you can fine people all you want, fifteen hundred, you could fine them five thousand, because what's going to happen, they'll stand under the radar. That's a lot less than what they're getting for a VHR, just to rent it without telling Pennington County to be overregulated with. So the whole thing doesn't make sense to me. I know the people on there don't like living next to VHRs sometimes, and they're just trying to find the best solution, but we are, we are government, we are supposed to be regulatory, not overregulatory, because we don't like something. So bottom line is, I'm with Lloyd. I think some of this, again, if you look at the market, if you look at the overregulation to bring people in, and the fines you're producing is not going to be enough to do anything to people that make good money on vacation home rentals, that if you fine me fifteen- home rentals, that, if you fine me fifteen hundred, I just made that, and I don't have a vacation home rental. I just made that in two, four weeks, or whatever, if I rented them. I rent vacation home rentals, and, and again, putting them in people's apartments or a room, you've got a lot of younger couples that are traveling, they can't afford everything that, people that, you know, have been in the community for a while, those things are very beneficial for them. So recreational vehicles, I mean, there should be a regulation on what kind of recreational vehicle, but I've seen box cars, like train box cars, that are just amazingly the coolest thing I've ever seen, and to rent it, it's, that's rented the most because it's a cool thing. So to limit it to where it should be, again, there's CUPs, there's going to have to be, it's going to have to be regulated in CUPs that it has water, sewer, and all the necessities and it follows, the VHR rules for health, safety, and welfare, but like I said, a lot of this is just a fear factor and not a, something that should be in government rules and regs for VHRs.
Well, I didn't know if I really made a motion, so, but, uh, I'm acceptable to that, the motion to continue to the next meeting in Hancock, second, my comment on the continuation motion is, is this, is...
Yes, the Chair.
Go ahead.
So what's going to happen between now and the next meeting?
Quite frankly, I was just going to say, I, I kind of want to review a little bit more on this market deal, this, you know, from, from what I reviewed this weekend, by seeing this other property, seeing the financials, and sit, looking at not only mine, you know, biggest concern that I heard from the public coming forward, I think, not trying to say anything bad, Ms. Agar, but she kind of said, you know, the fines, they'll pay that money, that, da-da-da, it's not a big money-making deal. I got the numbers, I can show it, and I seen the ones that I seen the other day, the market has driven it down to where, yes, when it first started out, yes, it was a big deal, they were charging good money, getting, making their payments, but the market's gotten to be to where it's at right now, it's competitive, in order to be competitive, they lower their rates, and so that money's not there. That's going to draw these investors, like the one that I went and looked at, they're trying to sell it. Never been at the property, but they're trying to sell, and they say, if you don't like it, don't, don't buy it, is what the comments in the paperwork. That's happening, they're starting to sell.
So you're looking at the fees and the fines.
I, I still want to kind of look a little bit, a little bit on the fees, but I do really want to get people registered. I think that's important, I, I think it's important that they have an ID number, that on their website, it says they've been, they're registered, they're doing a good job, you know, I think that's part of it. I guess I'd like to go through it a little bit and have some consideration of, of the fees and so forth, we kind of did that at our last meeting, but in order to feel comfortable, knowing the way the market's going, that's why I'm asking for the tune, it's not to dissect it, and I think we made some good changes. I don't want to throw everything out, I think, I think we, there needs to be some controls, but I don't want to be seeing how the markets go. I think I explained myself about what I feel vacation home rentals are going to be, that's going to be, I want to see properties to where the homeowner can live on the property and rent out part of it, whether it be a smaller square footage, or they live in a smaller square footage and rent out the house, that type of thing, because I think that's the way we're going to have to go, you know.
So Chair, I know we continued this, but it's been in my mind, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, and someone's going to think I am, but I'm not. So vacation home, homes in the Black Hills, right? Why are they different than vacation home rentals? Because it doesn't, it's not making sense to me why we haven't overregulated vacation homes, because those are a lot of out-of-town people and doing the same thing, so just because they rent them for a month instead of two weeks or four weeks? Why are we overregulating a vacation home rental and not vacation homes? It, it's not, the whole thing just doesn't make sense to me why you do that, because you, you have PUDs and commercials in different areas that are vacation things, and it's like doing a hotel room or owning a commercial business in a motel and saying, okay, this is just for, I mean, okay, we have weekly, we have monthly, we have six weeks, they don't come in and say, okay, all these rules and regs are to, we already have rules and regs, just like these vacation home rentals, now we're going to put some more on you, because you are weekly, or you are two weeks, or you are four weeks. What's the difference between a vacation home rental and a VHR? I'm not getting it. So why overregulate, the state already does it, that's the rules and regs, make sure they have the water, sewer, and capabilities on that land to do what everybody else does by state laws, follow those same, same state laws, because you don't like it, people don't like having renters next to them either, but we don't overregulate renters because, you know, that's unconstitutional. So how can we call this constitutional, doing this to other people and overregulating them? So that's why I'm saying, just, just think about it, guys, when you're doing vacation home, because you only have six weeks instead of two months, I, okay, so I'll put it at eight weeks, or I'll, I'll get away with the rules and regs with doing it two months or something. So I guess I don't, I, part-time is part-time. Vacation home rentals, people are only there two to three months, right? And they go back to where Arizona or wherever, those could be called vacation home rentals. What are we basing on, just because we have two to four weeks, or six weeks, or a certain amount? It's not making sense to me. That's why I think some of it could be re-looked at, and if the goal, Lloyd's right, if the, if the goal is market-driven, and the fines are not going to make a difference in one sense, where are we going with it? So.
You know, just last, my last follow-up before I say, because one of the things I do struggle with, quite frankly, is, you know, having, I've, I've got what you call long-term rentals, investment properties, my people have been in there for a long time, and I don't see any difference in between, the difference that I've seen between long-term rentals and the quote, short-term rentals, vacation home rentals, is that, yes, my people in the long terms stay there longer, but the wear and tear of my property is less on the vacation home rental. You know, and as I said, the market's going, if you can pay for it, and I'll just say that I struggle with that part with long-term rental and short-term rental, because quite frankly, you know, when I hear, get a lot of public comment, I've heard a lot of negative when it comes to the short-term rentals, whereas I remember getting a lot of complaints of long-term rentals, or even homeowners, you know, and so, what's fair? I mean, if we really get down to what's fair for the property owner and the people that are there, is what I, what I look at. You know, we want housing, so we do long-term rentals. If I took the property that, a lot of these, not just mine, but all of these vacation home, that was one of the talks that I had with another person, was, well, we need more housing on the market, affordable housing, well, these houses that you're talking about would take two, three-figure incomes to pay for, on most of them, not all of them, some would reduce it down. But, so that's not solving the problem. Even for, even if I converted mine into a long-term rental, the payment that would have to be made is not average, just to make the mortgage pay, because it's not paid for, you, you have to make the mortgage and make all the payments and upkeep. You're talking an income of two thousand dollars a month, just to keep it operated, you know, on top of everything else. Those are the things I, I want to address, because I've heard a lot of that from the public, as far as their concerns, is number one, is safety, and they seem to think that they're all there for money, upkeep. You know, I think, I'll just go back to the market-driven type stuff, but, I mean, motion on the floor is to continue, but we don't have to. There could be a substantive motion, they want to accept it, but I would like to consider just a little bit, a little bit more. There's no further discussion? Any further comment from the audience? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to continue to the next meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Chairman?
Sorry, Coach.
I have a strobe light on my eye, so I am going to leave. I've been getting, this is the fourth one this week, I had one where I was at my motel yesterday, so, yes, sir, I apologize, but I'm having a migraine, and I just listened through your thing just to make my point. I appreciate that, but, okay.
You don't have any last? No, let's go.
Do you want me to stay here for a while?
No. Next, we come to items from Chair and Commission members. I don't have no items to bring up. Anybody else? If not, well...
Mr. Chair, I just want to give the board a heads up. If y'all weren't aware, and that's, and it's a concern or an idea, but this is a, I don't know if it's a concern, but just to give the board a heads up, I don't know if y'all are aware, a couple of weeks ago, there was an email blast by South Dakota Canvassing. Once that went out, there, I was reached out to have an interview about the election process, so y'all might see some of that information coming out in the near future, some of my research, that's going to be presented in the news, so just giving y'all heads up, so that, if any of y'all get questions about it, you're also welcome to call me and ask me, but you're also welcome to send anybody my way.
Okay. Well, thanks, I've been getting some email stuff, and quite frankly, if I don't recognize them, I don't answer them, so I don't care who it is, they say, who they say they are, if I don't know them, I don't answer them, so I delete them and call them spam. But thanks for the heads up, I did hear about. Committee reports, Mr. Roskin.
Well, I met, okay, this is just the items besides our committee.
It's the ones that you're...
So I did meet with Representative Dennis Crowell, Representative District 30. Dennis is working on alternative funding for school districts, where the, where the county would not pay, taxpayers in the county would not pay towards supporting the school district, there would be another source of funding for that. He's put together a very detailed, he's been working on this for about a year, and he's got a lot of, you know, Dennis is in appropriations, and I think Mike Derby is the chair of that, but Dennis is, he asked me to look at it with him, and I like it, because we all know that we're looking for different sources of funding, and he's trying, the school district is what is eating our lunch, so if we can, taxpayers don't have the obligation to support the school districts, and there's another source of funding, then I'm, you know, I think we're on the right track there. And so from here, I think he's going to present it to the appropriations committee, they'll weed it out, and, and see if there's anything that Dennis is missing, and if, once he gets that refined, and we can, he can go through them, then he'll go to the Department of Revenue.
Mr. Chair.
But anyhow, I think that I really got to applaud Dennis for the work that he's put on this, he's got all his, every, his assumptions are based on research, and he can go to the state and get that research, so, I mean, Dennis is not going into this lightly, so it was a good meeting, and if anybody wants a one-on-one, I'm sure Dennis and me weren't happy to do that. I did...
Have a question for Ross.
I just had one quick question, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said he's working on, and he's got a pretty good plan or thought process to present to the appropriations committee of how not to have the counties pay the school tax to support schools?
Counties would not be, and, and all three sources, that'd be your egg, your other, and owner occupied. They would not pay taxes to support the school district, they would pay taxes on all the other items, not the school district.
Okay.
That would be another source of funding, and he's got that dialed in, right, to the, to the number, but, and he's met with Shannon upstairs on numerous occasions, so, like I said, I got to applaud Dennis for the work that he's put into this. I can see why he's on appropriations. I did attend a forest revision plan. We haven't had a permanent supervisor for quite a while, we're on our fourth temporary, and Ivan will be leaving the, as the supervisor of Blackest National Forest next month, and then we'll get another temporary. And so until we get a permanent supervisor, I don't really see this, in my opinion. The last meeting that we did at the forest revision plan was on Zoom, I don't really get a lot out of Zoom meetings, I like to be there one-on-one, and, anyhow, I just went through the listen, and I did attend the Zoom meeting, I was on a maid in Custer Fall River, I was the only county commissioner on that Zoom call. TIF, relative to the TIF committee, our last meeting was nothing more than just elect, electing officers, so John Roberts will be the chair of that, I'll be the vice chair, and I don't know Karen's last name, but Karen will be the secretary, former city council. And then we did a little training session, you know, what a TIF is, what the purpose of the TIF is, and I think under this current administration, you're going to see a lot more support for TIFs, that's just kind of my intake on that. Other than that, that's all I got to report.
Thanks, Ron. Mr. Drew.
I heard no meetings.
Oh, man, usually you catch the ones that... Travis.
All right, so I had a few meetings this time, Weed and Pest, they're working on an agreement, an egress hazard tree agreement for removal with the Forest Services, basically to make it a lot easier for whatever, there's a tree that's kind of leaning over in the egress areas, that we can go in and cut them out without having to go through a rigorous process. Basically, it's GPS sending it to the Forest Department, and they approve, and he goes in and cuts them down, so Scott's been working on that, that's almost to finalization, which will be good. They're working on their grant for weed and spraying agreements. November eighth is the, at the outdoor campus, is the District Four Weed and Pest meeting, for anybody who's interested, and then Weed and Pest Conferences in Spearfish, the 21st through the 23rd of February in 2024 at the Holiday Inn. Moving on to EMUB, a couple of big things out of there, is there cert training, they had cert training that day on the 13th, and now they've got over 400 individuals trained in our community through their, through the cert program. 511 closures, there's a, there's a work group that's working on that, be able to work for, figure out the best way to notify, and notify citizens quickly about road closures. And now the county, our, our county notification system, and is, the city is now joining our notification system. We've been asking them for years if they were to be interested in it, they didn't really want to be a part of it, and then they came to us and said, hey, we're, we're doing this notification system, but we'd like all your numbers, and they're like, wait a minute, you know we have this whole system already set up? So then they decided to come over and be a part of our system instead of operating on their own separate system. So some group come together and, and be on the same system. The 9/11 Users Board is where, well, we have a new chair, that'd be Sheriff Mueller is the new chair, and the new vice chair is Chief Colberson from the Fire Department. They were elected at that meeting, and they were there, it's not like they were elected because they weren't there, like, sometimes it happens, but they were there, and they both agreed to it, so it was good. Camp Rapid Backup Center for 911 is expanding, they moved emergency management out of the building, they moved over into another smaller building, or smaller room in a, in a building, and 911's now able to expand that area for their backup center. And then, one of the things that will be coming before us, is they, we discussed a shift differential pay proposal, so just to kind of give everyone a heads up, they're going to be bringing a shift differential pay proposal forward, and with support of the board members on that. So outside of that, that was, I think that was everything, I guess, you know, we were down in Wall for that Wall public meeting, I see all the stuff out here for the Lincoln Day dinner. I was at the Lincoln Day Dinner as well and interesting night, is what I'll say. That's it.
Well, thanks Travis and thanks for giving us a little bit of update on the Lincoln Day Dinner and the Wall. Um, I did attend the planning to, this is my month for Planning Commission and I, you know, I thought it was a good meeting and I think our, our planning commission's very well, not only ran, but we got some very well, uh, educated and concerned people on it and they really, uh, analyze and go through everything before they send it to us. So I, I told them how much I appreciated them, but they're, they do good work. Um, the only thing I also, you know, I think quite a few of us, except for, I didn't see Travis there, we were at the fire, fire annual banquet, banquet, that went very well. Um, so that was a good, good meeting. I did also attend the Community Health, uh, ribbon cutting as I'd said, they're changing their name, rebranding, it's called Complete Health now. Um, Live Well, I, I can't remember all of it, but they're rebranding from Community Health to Complete Health to try to get the stigma off of public health facility, try to, you know, cause a lot more people, yes, they take people who, um, who don't make enough money to have insurance, to the adjustment wages, that type of thing, but they do, uh, wanted to have preferred provision, physicians and do more. So that's why they went through the branding is to hopefully get more people in. So, and then they, at their board meeting, they, previous to that, before that week, you know, we went over the numbers for, uh, people coming in and they're doing well. So, uh, I just thought I'd pass that on. I don't think anything else. They reported and we did, did we report on the elected officials meeting that we had? Do you remember? With the mayor?
You mean, oh, yeah.
We did?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? Time flies. So with that, I don't have anything else, so I would probably go to approval of vouchers.
So move. Take it. Amount of three million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Moved by Drews and seconded by Lassiter. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next I'd look for a motion to go into executive session per S D C L one twenty-five dash two for personal issue per C, S D C L one twenty-five dash two, number one.
So move.
And, I'm sorry, and you need to add contractual pending litigation to today's.
Um, and contractual pending litigation per S D C L one twenty-five dash two, number three.
So, so move.
Those two. Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Look for a motion to modify the executive session.
So move. Take it.
Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Lassiter, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. At this time I'll recognize HR Director Carol Bancroft.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. So the first motion that I have is move to place Holly Hinni's Commission Manager at D B M C forty-four, step twenty, three thousand, six hundred and twenty and eighty cents biweekly and have that effective October twenty-ninth, two, two thousand, twenty-three.
So move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by-
I'll second the motion.
Roskinet, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
The second motion is to move to approve annual salary increase for a net grant, Pennington County Treasurer to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, effective October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
So move. Second.
Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Drews, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move, moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.